All right. Good morning, everybody. It is great to see everyone here. I am Tim Kennedy, a member of the New York State Senate, Chairman of the Transportation Committee, and I want to welcome you all here today, Monday, January 29, 2024, for the Senate Transportation Committee Hearing on Inter-City Passenger Rail Service. I want to recognize my colleagues, the anchor of the Transportation Committee, Senator Oberrocker, also my great friend and colleague on the Democratic side, Senator John Liu. Today, we hold this meeting on intercity passenger rail, and we're very excited about the opportunity that it presents to us to discuss rail service here in the state of New York, the vision for the future, the issues at hand in the present, and the potential for not just enhancing passenger rail here in the state of New York, but establishing high-speed rail here in the state of New York. So, we have much to talk about. Let me just check, are we good here on this side?
Make sure that button is on.
That button is on. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. So, for starters this morning, I want to recognize Janet Ho, the Assistant Commissioner for the New York State Department of Transportation. Assistant Commissioner, thank you for being with us here this morning. I know you have testimony, and we have a number of questions, so the floor is yours. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Good morning, Senator Kennedy, and members of the Transportation Committee. As introduced, I am Janet Ho. I am the Assistant Commissioner at the New York State Department of Transportation for Finance and Integrated Modal Services. On behalf of our Commissioner, Marie Therese Dominguez, I thank you for providing us the opportunity to speak on this issue today. We're honored to be here. Let me begin by stating unequivocally that the Department of Transportation, under the leadership of Governor Hochul, understands the importance of reliable and efficient passenger rail service. We remain committed to supporting and improving the passenger experience all across the state. As part of this commitment, New York State has made substantial investments to enhance reliability, expand service, and ensure a more enjoyable and convenient experience for the passenger. And these investments are paying off. During the 2023 federal fiscal year, we set all-time records on Amtrak state-supported service routes with ridership in excess of 1.8 million passengers and $102 million in revenue. Amtrak finished their fiscal year with an on-time performance of 84.7% in the New York-to-Albany corridor and an overall combined on-time performance rating of 78% for all New York State-supported services. To support passenger rail service in New York, the state provides approximately $44 million to subsidize Amtrak service. This includes the popular Empire Service, which provides seven daily round trips between New York City and Albany; the Maple Leaf Service, which provides two daily round trips between New York City and Niagara Falls; and one daily round trip between New York City and Toronto. It also includes the Adirondack Service, which provides a daily round trip between New York City and Montreal; and the Even Allen Express Service, which provides a daily round trip between New York City and Burlington, Vermont. We are also actively exploring new opportunities to expand passenger rail service. Working with our partners in Massachusetts and Amtrak, we launched the Berkshire Flyer Service, which provides seasonal service to Pittsfield, Massachusetts; and working with our partners in Vermont, we recently extended the Even Allen Express Service to Burlington. In addition to financial support, we may have made substantial investments to improve reliability and create a more convenient experience for rail passengers. These investments include new stations in Schenectady, Rochester, Niagara Falls, and downtown Buffalo at Exchange Street; and of course, there's the Moynihan Station Train Hall, which provides riders with a majestic gateway as they travel to and from New York City. We have also invested in track and signal projects, including a new second track along 17 miles between Albany and Schenectady; a new fourth track at Rensselaer Station; grade crossing improvements; and positive train control along the Hudson Line. This has greatly improved performance by removing bottlenecks that limit capacity and increasing reliability. We are partnering with Amtrak on the development of their new aero train sets, which will bring an enhanced passenger experience and reduce train emissions to all our routes in the upcoming years. Additionally, New York State and Amtrak have jointly funded more than $100 million in projects that have replaced rails and ties, stabilized slopes, and rehabilitated railroad bridges and culverts. These and other strategic investments help to increase speeds, improve reliability, and enhance safety. However, we know that more needs to be done to meet the demands of the 21st century. That's why we initiated the Empire Corridor High-Speed Rail Program to help achieve our vision of a passenger rail system that includes increased speeds, reduced travel time, better on-time performance and efficiency, reduced interference from freight trains, minimizing the impact in the environment and local communities, and providing better service to all the communities and constituents along the Empire Rail Corridor. We believe these goals will help us provide better travel options for New Yorkers, increase ridership, and help create a more balanced multimodal transportation system. In 2023, this program achieved a major milestone with the publication of the final Tier One Environmental Impact Statement, or EIS, and Record of Decision by the Federal Railroad Administration. The completion of this federally mandated study allows the Department of Transportation to begin the process of identifying and obtaining federal funds for multiple projects that will help us fulfill the program goals along the 463-mile-long corridor between Niagara Falls and New York City. The Tier One EIS evaluated a range of alternatives to build infrastructure improvements and enhance passenger rail service. After extensive analysis and public outreach, the study settled on a preferred alternative that supports a maximum speed of up to 110 miles per hour between the Capitol District and New York City and 90 miles per hour between Hoffman's, which is near Amsterdam, and Niagara Falls. It would add train service, allowing for four new round trips between Albany and Niagara Falls and four new round trips between Albany and New York City. While we realize that a maximum speed of 110 miles per hour likely may not meet the popularly-held definition of high-speed rail, it still represents an extraordinarily challenging undertaking, given the age and condition of New York State's existing rail infrastructure and property constraints all along the corridor. The Empire Corridor is one of the most complex rail corridors in the nation, with track segments that are controlled by multiple owners, including CSX, Amtrak, and the Metro North Railroad. Achieving higher-speed alternatives would essentially require the creation of entirely new corridor, which would be dedicated exclusively to high-speed passenger rail service. Construction of a new corridor would be a massive effort that would include new roadbeds, tracks, viaducts, bridges, and other support facilities. The footprint of a new corridor would require the acquisition of approximately 3,000 acres of privately-owned land impacting adjacent wetlands, parks, and farmland. And all of this would come with a heavy financial burden. According to the EIS's analysis, creating a system capable of just 125 mile-per-hour maximum speeds would cost more than $15 billion, and that was in $2017. As it stands, the implementation of the Tier One EIS's preferred alternative, known as the 90B, will include the construction of more than 340 miles of new third- and fourth-track between Albany and Buffalo, and 28 miles of new double-track between Buffalo and Niagara Falls. Improvements between Albany and New York would include upgrading the entire signal system, straightening track curvature to allow for higher speeds, and constructing new interlocking and siding tracks. Station platforms would need to be upgraded and modernized at Rhine Cliff, Hudson, Amsterdam, Utica, and Buffalo Depew stations. These improvements will not only allow for increased speeds, but would also reduce track conflicts with freight trains, thereby improving overall efficiency and reducing travel times. We believe the improvements called for as part of the preferred alternative would lead to a 95% on-time performance rating and ridership increases of approximately 1 million passengers, which is a 63% increase. These improvement projects, like many of our construction projects, would create jobs, union jobs, and help boost economic activity all across the state. And the planning for this is already underway. NISTDA is working with the Federal Railroad Administration on progressing the program for the Empire Corridor through the newly-established Corridor Identification Program, which is intended to help guide intercity passenger rail development and to create a pipeline of projects that are ready for implementation. The Empire Corridor has already been awarded $500,000 from the FRA to initiate development efforts and develop the pipeline of projects. Once this is done, the Empire Corridor would then be eligible to receive subsequent funding for further development planning, preliminary engineering, environmental review, and construction of projects in the pipeline. One project that we already know will be a major part of this effort is the Livingston Avenue Bridge, which is the connector for all rail movement north and west of Albany. The Department of Transportation remains fully committed to advancing this transformative rail project, which will replace the existing Civil War-era bridge connecting Albany and Rensselaer with a modern crossing that will allow for faster train service and help reduce delays. The Livingston Avenue Bridge project was not included in the most recent funding awarded by the FRA, but we are advancing the project, and we plan to reapply for additional federal discretionary funding opportunities in the future, and we're confident it will be positively received. NISTDA is grateful for the robust support we have received from the Biden-Harris administration, and we look forward to working with all our partners on this and other priorities we're moving forward. In closing, just let me reiterate that the Department of Transportation understands that intercity passenger rail is critically important to the economic health and well-being of New York State. That's why we have made significant investments to help improve service, and we will continue to work to fulfill the goals of the Tier One EIS. Our aim, at the end of the day, is to improve travel throughout the Empire Corridor for both this generation and generations to come. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Assistant Commissioner. Let me start by just, first and foremost, out of gratitude for your testimony and your leadership. I know within the DOT that you are the rail expert and, you know, leading the charge when it comes to passenger rail and this issue. You know, I listened intently to your testimony. It was concise, and it's a very complex issue that we need to break into here. And I've got a lot of questions, and I think my colleagues do as well, so I would appreciate your indulgence. First and foremost, you know, I have a timeline in my hand that I'm looking at. It started back in 1989, this conversation, not just about passenger rail and improving the Empire Corridor, but high-speed rail in the state of New York. 35 years ago, I was in seventh grade. I have a seventh-grade son now, 12-years-old. That's where I was when this conversation started. 35 years, nothing should take 35 years. And I'm appreciative of the efforts to move this process forward. I think the goal here for all of us is to make the enhancement of passenger rail service, reliability, and dependability here in the state of New York a priority for the people of this state and this government, so we're not waiting any longer. So, let me just start by asking, just, you know, simply to separate the two. There's high-speed rail, and I want to get into that conversation because I think it's very important. But let's talk about the five alternatives. One alternative being a no-build alternative. Then there was the 90A. Then there was the 90B alternative that you discussed. Then there was the 110 alternative and the 125 alternative, closer to higher-speed rail, but not quite high-speed rail as we would interpret it in 2024, maybe 35 years ago, but not today. Talk about, if you could, please, the real focus on why, and I know you talked about some of it in your testimony, but just, you know, we're having a conversation here as much as anything else. Why 90B makes the most sense? The timeline for implementing that, how we can prioritize that, what we can do this year, and in a very expedited fashion to get more reliable and dependable and timely passenger rail here in the Empire Corridor, particularly from Niagara Falls and Buffalo region to the Capitol region, where our freight rail plays such a significant role in the ability for passenger rail to actually function to the level that the riders deserve it to be.
Well, there are a number of questions there.
Sure.
Thank you, Senator, for taking the time to want to dig into this and to explore this issue. I think I'll start with the first one, which I think was why 90B. So, as you outlined as part of the Tier One EIS, multiple alternatives were looked at. This all went through, of course, you have the no-build, which is part of any environmental process. You know, they looked at the various speeds, the existing speed, the 90 to 110. You had the 125 mile-per-hour limit. They briefly looked at 160 to 220-plus as part of that earlier EIS process. That was looked at. It was not further developed coming out of that process due to just the constraints, the large estimated cost associated with developing anything over 125, and just the existing infrastructure and curvature along the current rail route, which essentially found that 125 mile-per-hour speeds was really probably the most feasible that that could be obtained at that time. And that all was looked at as part of the original Tier One EIS process. And then, kind of as we mentioned in the testimony, as they looked at each of these options, we landed on the 90B, and it's really just a weighing of costs and benefits, right? What we, the department, are looking to do is to leverage the existing infrastructure in New York State. We want to make sure that our constituents, that your constituents, have the best rail service that we can currently provide. And when we were looking at everything moving forward, as you looked at all of those analyses, really, to get to higher-speed rail, you're really looking at straightening the curvature of the existing track, right? Because the faster you can go, it's always going to be straight, right? The minute you start curving, you're going to start slowing down. And so, 125-plus, which came with the cost estimate of $15 billion, that would have required, essentially, developing and establishing a whole-new rail corridor separate from the existing tracks. It would be dedicated exclusively to just passenger rail service. Right now, obviously, the existing corridor accommodates both freight and passenger service. And as mentioned, it is complex. There's a lot of stakeholders that are involved there, a lot of interest. There's freight movement. You have movement from the Metro North commuter railroad as well as Amtrak, and all of that needed to be taken into consideration. In addition, when you're talking about establishing an entirely-new rail corridor, it would have involved, essentially, acquisition of a lot of private property through existing neighborhoods. And coming out of, actually, the public comment process in the Tier One EIS, those were a lot of the comments from interested stakeholders, from community members who were concerned about what the impact would be to, you know, their homes, their property, and the land that was around that corridor. So, at the end of the day, what we landed on was how can we best increase speed, increase reliability, as well as leverage existing infrastructure with the best cost that we thought that we could get? And that was how we landed on the 90B. I think you also asked, hopefully, I'm not talking too much.
No, you're doing wonderful.
Feel free to interrupt me at any time.
Please, no, 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 please.
But I think you also asked, how can we prioritize what gets done next? Right? As you mentioned, this whole process started years and years ago. Like you, I think I was probably in either elementary or middle school when this all first started. And I think the focus now really is, how do we advance this now? How do we make sure that we are advancing projects, getting things going, making sure that we're starting to make those investments in the rail corridor so we are providing better service? I mentioned briefly in the testimony the Corridor Identification Program. So, I'll back it up a minute. The Tier One EIS, we got approval from FRA last March. It is a major milestone. It's federally required as we start to develop the corridor to get past, essentially, their approval of the concept, where we want to go. And they have signed off on that. FRA also, in 2023, awarded, essentially, what is called the Corridor Identification Program awards. That program is intended to allow states to further develop and build out their service-development plans for rail corridors. And Empire Corridor was awarded one of those grants. So, being in that program, being provided that $500,000, that allows us, the department, to take a look at what was outlined in the Tier One EIS, which was conceptual. There is, I think, an appendix, I want to say it's like H or J, which has an entire list of projects lined out. I mean, it was conceptual. It was in five-year chunks for how much capital investment would need to be done to build out the corridor. Being in the Corridor Identification Program, we can go back. We can better define some of that. We can look at the projects that need to be advanced. We're in that planning stage now. And then, the key thing about the program is that it is intended to build out a pipeline of projects. So, as we develop that plan, not only the capital plan but a service-development plan for the corridor, what that allows us to do is, as future funding opportunities come up through FRA or other federal discretionary grant programs, we have a pipeline built in place. We know which projects need to move forward that we can advocate for funding for. And FRA, I believe itself, will look to that pool of projects as we look to move forward.
Let me just put a fine point on that last statement about the funding from FRA. What do we need to do in the immediacy? We're in the budget process right now, right? End of January. We have until the end of March. We have a lot of conversations that are taking place internally within our conferences and with the governor. What can we do within the budget right now to help to get, to leverage that funding at the federal level to implement this 90B alternative if everything's been agreed upon?
So, I do think that planning still needs to take place. I mean, I think the project that is advancing right now is Livingston Avenue Bridge Project. We would obviously continue to hope for and appreciate all support. We do plan to reapply for federal discretionary grants for that project as it moves forward. Again, key connector, right? It's the primary connector that allows any rail traffic to move north and south of Albany, or north and west of Albany. I apologize. So, that is a very important project that we are looking to get done. And as we move forward with the Corridor ID Program, as we build out that list of projects, we'll be looking to apply for future planning grants for additional construction as those projects start to get fleshed out. And we would very much appreciate all support from any stakeholders as we look to advance those projects.
Yeah, thank you, Assistant Commissioner. Look, we are very supportive of that project and others, you know, any way that we can invest in our rail to make it more efficient and reliable, especially the Livingston Bridge that you mentioned, Civil War-era. I know, going back to 1865, there are parts of that bridge that are in dire need of replacement. But let's go back to the Empire Corridor from Niagara Falls and Buffalo to Albany. People will take, two-day, including myself and many others, tens of thousands of others will take the throughway, four hours down the road to get to the Capitol region and elsewhere because the passenger rail is not dependable and reliable. It can take you four, four-and-a-half hours in a car. It'll take you longer than that, and it has, every single time I've taken, the rail. It should be faster. The problem is, again, it's the reliability. It's the timeliness. It's the dependability. And people want to take the train. People want to have a dependable passenger rail service, but it's the freight rail service that is interrupting the passenger rail service, But it's the freight rail service that is interrupting the passenger rail service, particularly on the Empire State Line. And 90B, the alternative, resolves that, correct?
It does. It should increase speed along the corridor.
And it, and it resolves it because it creates a third track, and in some cases, a fourth track. So how do we, in the most expedited fashion, move that along? I mean, again, I, 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 I mentioned 35 years because neither one of us, no one was here that is here today. And that's just far too long to wait, and I think just, people are sick of waiting. And nothing kills a good project or a good idea like time, and it's been a long time coming. And so, you know, far too long, quite frankly. Now that we have a, now that we have that alternative that we can agree upon, uh, and, and by the way, we all recognize it. It's not true high-speed rail, which would be, you know, 125 or above, or potentially even 155, uh, uh, given federal standards, uh, for new rail. But it's better than what we have. It's higher speed rail, it's dependable, reliable rail. Um, it's, it's connectivity between, uh, all of the upstate cities, Niagara Falls, Buffalo, Rochester, Syracuse, Albany. And then, of course, we have a very reliable and dependable passenger rail service between the Capital Region and the great city of New York. And so, um, you know, we, we want the same for upstate. You know, what do we need to do right now to make that happen?
Well, I think it's a matter of really just continuing to partner with us. Uh, as I mentioned, we are in process. The Tier One EIS was approved last March. Um, we were, uh, admitted into the corridor or awarded the Corridor Identification Program, um, at the beginning of December, um, just this past December. So we're working kind of right now to look at the projects that are in place that would, right, start to build out, um, additional track, uh, between Albany and Niagara Falls, looking at those projects. All of those things are, are kind of what we're looking at right now as we work through the Corridor ID Program. And, um, continuing to work with you, continuing to have your support, uh, continuing to work with all the stakeholders really is, I think, the, the best thing that we could do. Um, and as we start to flesh those out, we'll probably be continuing to reach out, um, to keep you informed and to continue to, uh, get support as we advance projects, uh, to FRA for discretionary funding.
And it, can you give a timeline of that process?
I would guess that part of the, um, developing the Corridor ID Program probably will take a little bit. It probably, um, you know, parts may come sooner than others, but it's, it's a year-long probably planning process um, as we look to develop that plan and get it finalized. And as you do that, you know, there are probably phases that we can look at because we know that there are certain projects that, um, are closer to implementation than others. And, um, we'll continue to look at that and just kind of update everything, uh, to see what the best investments and the best path forward is under that Corridor ID Program.
So, so we're looking at at least a year out before the next phase of the process?
I think we'll have work to do. We'll continue that conversation, but in terms of finalizing things, my, my guess is probably about a year.
Okay. It's a $6 billion investment in capital funds over, uh, and those are in $2017, so most likely it's gone up. But let's call it $6 billion for the purpose of the conversation because that's what we have at the moment. Um, let, let, let's talk about that. What would the expectation be of moving this process and project forward? 90B particularly, the, 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 uh, alternative that's been preferred here through the study? What kind of funding would be necessary from the state level? What kind of funding would be expected as a partnership from the federal level?
I do think obviously we have the $6 billion estimate. Um, I'm hesitant to, uh, try to guess ahead, uh, for exactly what those dollars will be because, as mentioned, we're in process right now of re, uh, further fleshing out the conceptual ideas that were outlined in the Tier One EIS. And until you have that kind of better fleshed out, right, until you know what your projects are going to be, um, taken past the conceptual timeframe, but really kind of starting to build things up, uh, get things past preliminary engineering, I think, um, I'd be hesitant to, to, to add a number to that for right now other than our high-level estimate of $6 billion.
So w- within, and, and this is kind of what I'm trying to get to, Assistant Commissioner, what, what we're, what we're working on right now, we want to move this process forward. We have the alternative that's preferred. I think there's agreement generally that it's a step in the right direction. Um, and we want to help further that process. Uh, is there nothing that can be done in this moment to expedite that financially otherwise?
I think at this point in time, and, and thank you for your support and, uh, for your, uh, continued interest in this. At this point in time, where we are is essentially trying to better flesh out and, and develop plans so that we have hard projects that we can advance. And at this point, we're still kind of in planning stages. Obviously, our big focus right now is Livingston Avenue Bridge Project. We're going to get that moving, keep it going. Um, we have other, uh, projects that we're looking at, but they still kind of need to be further fleshed out and developed. Um, and that's really, I think, where, where we're at in terms of planning. Um, so it's a matter of trying to better flesh out that pipeline.
Uh, just to, just to be clear, going back to the five alternatives, I think it's important to, to, to note that, you know, the first alternative, which was do nothing, actually isn't necessarily doing nothing. You still have to make capital improvements. It still would cost hundreds of millions of dollars just to maintain, maintain the, the rail as it is. Uh, and then there is a nearly $2 billion alternative, which was 90A. The 90B alternative, which would put in place a separate track for passenger rail. That's upwards of $6 billion estimated, um, but would put in that 90 mile an hour consistency between the Western New York region and the Capital Region, 110 miles an hour between the Capital Region and the city of New York. The 110-mile alternative, which would put in a separate right-of-way, which would create other issues, timeliness, funding-wise, um, you know, uh, property management issues. And then, of course, the alternative 125, which would be a totally separate elevated structure, different than anything else that we've discussed. But so, so I just, again, because want to level set here. We're talking, we're separating high-speed rail today from dependable, reliable, higher-speed, timely rail. I think the vision for high-speed rail is something that we definitely need to continue to focus on here in, in New York State. I think there is a, a, a true clamoring of support on a statewide level. No matter where I go, people say, we need high-speed rail. People recognize that there is a, a, a need for connectivity for our communities, for our economies, for business, for growth and development, uh, for investment, investment in and of ourselves, uh, to connect, you know, the, the great regions, not only of our state. When you look at the downstate region, uh, the city of New York and, and, and the, in the tri-state area, um, in the great population and economy of the downstate region, um, to the upstate region that over the years, uh, has really suffered because of a, a lack of investment and, and economic growth. And we, so we want to tie the two together, and I think that's where, for years, people have said, you know, we, we, we need high-speed rail. That's what people, but if we have a dependable, higher-speed rail service, it could accomplish much of the same goal. But I think for the long term, also looking at high-speed rail like other states are looking at, and not only looking at, but implementing like California, and we can talk about that if you'd like, Commissioner. You know, to connect not only our upstate regions here in, in New York to the downstate region, but to think about connecting the, the larger metropolitan areas from a regional perspective, you think of North America. Uh, you think right across the border in, um, Buffalo is Ontario, and of course, the great city of Toronto with millions of people, the largest city in all of Canada, uh, right at our doorstep. And to think about connecting our regions and other regions across North America with a high-speed rail service, I think it's a vision that we have to really focus in on and prioritize. And I would ask for your indulgence in that and your, your support for that, uh, Assistant Commissioner. So separating the two, again, and getting into the, the details of, of passenger rail service here as we are trying to make it better, and looking at this alternative 90B and investments, um, and I mentioned the border. I want to talk about the trains today that are having border issues. So, uh, oftentimes, trains that are going into Canada, whether that's in Niagara Falls, up in the Western New York region, or up in Plattsburgh in the North Country, are delayed due to, um, the, the, the border issues and taking more time than, than is allotted. Uh, how do we, as a state, do more to lessen the burden at the border to make that crossing more efficient for rail service that's going into Toronto and, and Montreal?
So I will, uh, clarify that DOT does have constant communication with Amtrak and the host railroads. Um, obviously, I think what you're referring to were issues that were had over the summer where, um, due to, uh, uh, speed restrictions that were put in place by a privately-held Canadian railroad, um, it did make it difficult for us to, for, for us and Amtrak to ensure that there was continued service uh, on the Adirondack Corridor. Uh, at that time, we did, uh, and in Amtrak as well, state that we were not pleased um, with what, essentially what happened with those speed restrictions. Um, that being said, understanding that those speed restrictions that the railroad put in place were safety-related. Um, we had multiple conversations with, uh, all of the stakeholders that were involved, um, to try to address that issue. And we continue to have those conversations so that we can get ahead of the problem and mitigate any issues that arise, um, this coming summer. It was related to, um, essentially heat, uh, um, temperatures. So we are constantly working on that. And I would say, um, what would be appreciated as we move forward with those, again, I feel like I'm beating a drum, is continued support, right, from, from, uh, all of you, all of our stakeholders so that we are communicating, um, to, to all the, all of the, um, involved folks, particularly railroads, uh, just what our expectations are. We do want to try to work with them. We don't necessarily want to just try to do everything by fiat, but, um, I do think that what we are looking to do is try to make sure that we're, um, building on those relationships, having those conversations, and trying to find a workable path forward so that you're not just deadlocked on an issue.
Yeah, th- thank you, Assistant Commissioner. Look, you, you have our support, but, but what we need to do is, is move faster. The, the state needs to prioritize this. And again, this is 35 years in the making. And so now we have an alternative that we can actually focus on and move forward, and we have a, a path and a direction where we can make improvements that people have been clamoring about. I think that's, that's a, a very necessary, but, and I appreciate what you said about the, the, the delay, the slowdown. And, and I recognize that, that, that was from the, the Canadian government that said, you know, we have to slow down because of the heat and, you know, just being careful. But actually, I want to focus on the border crossing itself. And, 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 you know, th- there is a, um, clearance that passengers have to have going into Canada and coming into the United States. How do we, as a state, work in the vicinities of Niagara Falls and, um, Plattsburgh on a preclearance? What can we do to help preclear passengers to make it a more efficient, uh, ride in, in, in and out of Canada?
So, um, we actually are in conversations with, uh, um, the Canadian government um, about looking at a preclearance program, uh, focused, um, on the station in Montreal. Uh, those conversations are ongoing. Currently, uh, it's with, um, Canadians, Ministry of Transport, or Canada's Ministry of Transport, uh, to, um, they're relooking at that station to see what's feasible. And we're part of those conversations. Um, they're still kind of looking to see what they can do with respect to, uh, Customs and Border Patrol. Well, in, for, in their, in their case, it would be, um, uh, Canadian Border Security, um, to determine what makes sense there. So there are conversations ongoing about a project like that. Um, again, working with the Government of Canada to try to advance a program. Um, but there, it's, they're still looking at the feasibility of the physical structure in Canada.
Okay. And, uh, on the Niagara Falls side?
On the Niagara Falls side, we've had conversations, um, again, uh, there are requirements on both sides, uh, security-wise, that need to be met. Um, but I think those conversations are still ongoing. There's not as, um, as fleshed out a project there.
And one, one, one more question. I'm going to let my colleagues, I have many more questions, Assistant Commissioner, but I'm going to, um, move to my colleagues in a moment. Just breaking down, again, into the, the details of enhancing passenger rail. Uh, it seems like sometimes the, uh, most simplest of issues to resolve seem to be the hardest to resolve, like passenger rail from Niagara Falls to Buffalo. Consistent and dependable passenger rail. What can we do to enhance passenger rail service? Consistent and dependable and timely passenger rail service between Niagara Falls and Buffalo? And I would go so far as to say, the other cities, just do the, connect the dots. Buffalo, Dunkirk, Rochester, Syracuse. But Niagara Falls, with its millions of visitors, and our 20 miles, uh, m- m- our neighbor 20 miles to the north of Buffalo, it is nearly impossible to depend upon, if not outright impossible, to depend upon passenger rail service to get you from one great city to the other great city. That's a problem. Uh, it's a problem that I think we're all aware of. How do we resolve that issue? Because I think it speaks to the other issues that need to be resolved.
So I think beyond the capital investment, which we've been talking about, uh, we are in constant communication with the host railroad, um, right? That, that is something that we're, um, always having conversations with them about. It is a tricky, uh, relationship. They are a privately-held company, um, but we do work with them. Uh, they have, uh, they, CSX is the owner. They operate the rail, um, as you mentioned, between Capital District all the way up to Niagara Falls. And we share that space with them, uh, in terms of freight, uh, for freight traffic. So, you know, in terms of what could be done moving forward, I mean, we have productive conversations with them, but we're certainly happy to, uh, continue again, to solicit your support as we have those conversations to just, um, make sure that passenger rail traffic is consistent through the quarter.
Thank you. The 90B alternative, though, would resolve that issue between Niagara Falls and Buffalo, correct?
That's correct, Senator. What it would do, this is kind of more the capital side, uh, is to, um, create additional capacity, right? That's the building out of, whether it be third or fourth track, additional sightings, um, ways to allow, um, both freight and passenger traffic to share the same system.
Thank you. So my point being, and I think everyone can agree upon, that the quicker we can implement that strategy, the better for everyone. Uh, I'm going to call on my colleague, Senator John Liu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for convening this hearing, and, uh, thank you, Commissioner Hall, for joining us. Uh, and I'm excited about this hearing. And I think that, uh, it's the chairman's vision to realize better rail service. Now, you know, look, I, I'd be super excited about high-speed rail. I mean, they're already talking about high-speed rail from New, between New York City and Boston, 225 miles an hour. And I, I think that's going to happen. It may even happen before we get a lot of improvements in our rail service in New York. But we're one state, and people talk about upstate needing more resources. It's upstate needing more resources. It benefits New York City and downstate as well. And I know that, uh, you know, s- and I agree with, uh, Chairman Kennedy's concept of kind of separating the high-speed from the better, better rail service, which I think we definitely need throughout the state. I think we should focus on that and try to bring it along as quickly as possible. And I think the problem, Mr. Chairman, I think part of the, the issue here is we have the State Department of Transportation testifying, which is a very capable agency, well-respected, certainly has my respect. Uh, but from the DOT's point of view, this, this can, this really is viewed as a, a major project and expenditure. But if we elevate it in the state, I think it needs to be viewed as an investment. Countries all over the world are building better rail service, including high-speed service, as an investment in their economy and to create jobs and to create trade and commerce. And in the end, the calculus is that it pays for itself. So while we're here talking about how, how much things are going to cost, uh, how long it's going to take, there doesn't seem to be enough discussion about, you know, how, how big the payoff could be. In, in the state of New York, we are now in an era where taxpayer subsidies for private corporations are now seen regularly in the billions. So I feel like the state, including the governor's office, they need to take a look at whether some of those investment dollars could be better used on long-term infrastructure investment, like our rail system. I, I personally would rather invest in the rails, which is infrastructure that will last several generations from now, than necessarily giving it to private corporations. And you know what? When we invest in the rail system, it makes New York even more attractive for businesses and major corporations that could locate in the state of New York. So I would encourage the State Department of Transportation. I know this is kind of, this gets a little bit outside the DOT's box, but definitely more coordination with perhaps Empire State Development Corporation, um, other major state agencies so that this is not just a transportation system. This is not just a train project. This is a, this is an overall economic development project for the state of New York and vital to our, our collective future. I guess that's, I didn't have as much a question because, uh, the chairman and our commissioner here have addressed so many of them. But, uh, I, you know, I think that we just need to elevate the conversation here. And then also, uh, oh, I, I do have a question. I mean, uh, and I think Chairman Kennedy touched upon this, but are we truly maximizing the federal dollars that are available? And what's been done since President Biden announced the infrastructure, the trillion-dollar infrastructure initiative a couple of years ago?
Thank you, Senator Liu. Uh, one for your support, um, and, uh, and comments about working with our sister agencies. We certainly do, um, have relationships with those agencies and can continue to have conversations and explore those. I would say, in response to your question about have we truly maximized the federal dollar, uh, I think yes. While we were hopeful when we applied for federal discretionary funding, uh, for the Livingston Avenue Bridge Project, Avenue Bridge project, which we did not receive an award from, we have received other federal rail discretionary dollars in the last year or so. One actually is that corridor identification program funding, again, planning funding that lets us better flesh out and develop the plans we have in place. We also received an award of about $14 million. This was a grid crossing safety award. Again, these all kind of help play together. You have this delicate dance with the rail infrastructure of, you know, you have infrastructure, you have a lot of different stakeholders, including the railroads that actually own the infrastructure. And then you have grid crossing improvements, which all kind of play into safety, so that the, it was a grid crossing elimination project, which provides essentially better flashers, better crossing at the New York State Fairgrounds. So, as you're kind of moving through that area, it does help improve safety and can improve speed. I was going to say, another one that we won maybe a little bit before the administration was, we have a project in place right now that was an investment from FRA for the Rhine Cliff Station, which is to improve interlockings at that station, and then raise the platform to allow for essentially more trains to kind of go through.
Okay. Well, I mean, I thank you for mentioning those specific federal grants, but, you know, we're looking for billion-dollar items, not just million-dollar or tens of million-dollar items. And I think we, you know, I have a feeling we're going to have a huge champion soon in the federal government, who's going to be keeping an eye out for us and delivering more resources, especially so we can build upon our train system here in the state of New York. And with that, Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Thank you, Senator Liu. Senator Cooney.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for your leadership on this issue, not just today, but over the past several years. You've been an advocate for advancing this conversation, and we appreciate it. Thank you, Assistant Commissioner, for your leadership as well, and for sharing the updates. I agree, there has been a significant milestone achieved. That said, we want to make sure that we're pushing forward and being more aggressive. I think of all the issues that I think about, when I think about upstate New York cities, it's the lack of transportation access, which hinders our opportunity, as Senator Liu shared, to achieve some of the economic opportunities that we seek. 20 years ago, hard to believe, 20 years ago, I started my public service career working for the late Congresswoman Louise Slaughter in Rochester, who was a huge advocate for high-speed rail and really intermodal access. And yet, here we are, 20 years later, continuing to have what I consider to be a frustrating conversation, because there's widespread popularity and interest in a higher-speed rail option. Now, I think 90B gets us to have that conversation, but again, as Senator Liu shared before, other states are already thinking bigger and bolder and beyond us. And so, what is it going to take for us to really recognize the opportunity for us to better connect upstate to downstate? Senator Kennedy is absolutely correct, that Toronto becomes this beacon of hope for us in terms of its population, I believe around 6.3 million in their metro area. To connect that thriving commerce center to New York City just makes sense. And really, it's one of those examples of a rising tide lifts all boats. All of those upstate throughway cities of Buffalo and Rochester and Syracuse and Albany really will be caught up in that same opportunity if we're able to achieve the 90B realization. What I think is different now than was perhaps before is that we have experienced through this pandemic, the importance and opportunity that remote work brings to us. And so, when I think about some of the greatest challenges that are facing New York, housing, economic opportunity and job growth, right? Upstate New York can provide relief to our friends in New York City and Long Island by creating opportunities for remote work, housing access, good public schools, et cetera. And if we're able to open up the state, New York State as a whole becomes more competitive economically with other states across the country. Rail has a big role to play in that. So, I was pleased by your comments earlier. I'm hoping, if I could start with some questions around the differentiation of speed, really particularly from the capital region westbound to Senator Kennedy's district in western New York and Niagara Falls. I understand the curvature of the track adds some complications, but you commented earlier about the relationship between CSX and Amtrak, specifically on the passenger rail side of sharing lines. As Chair Kennedy mentioned, 90B would allow us the opportunity to look at a third or fourth rail. Could you share more about the speed differential, the 90 miles per hour speed option in upstate versus the 110 from the capital region down to New York City?
So, I think what, and you did identify it, again, we have kind of shared, and I'll back this up a little bit, that the corridor itself is very complex. We operate on, again, west of the capital region toward Niagara Falls, we operate on host railroad infrastructure. They operate freight traffic along that corridor as well. So, as the host railroad, we do work with them to coordinate the movement of that traffic, both passenger and freight traffic. They have requirements in place, things like there needs to be a 30-foot separation requirement between trains. You have, and again, I was going to say, I think I have a stat on it, over 60 trains, freight trains a day, that share traffic along that entire corridor. So, it is trying to manage both types of traffic that, to some extent, dictates the current speed. It's, right, that's currently what we think is feasible, and hopefully, as we start to build out and better flesh out the 90B option, starting to design for those projects, build in those additional tracks and sightings that will allow passenger and freight traffic to move past each other more easily, you start to get an increase in speed.
Some odd freight train traffic. Is that particularly between the capital region and Buffalo?
That's along the entire.
The entire corridor. So, again, I just, I'm confused about why the differential for the upstate or western New York track versus the capital region to, through Hudson Valley down to New York City, is if it's the same amount of traffic is on those lines, why the 20 mile per hour differential?
It's just in terms of max speed. So, how many trains can move through, at what speeds? Freight trains, to certain extent, are limited. They can't go as fast as passenger trains a lot of the time, because they're carrying different types of cargo.
I see. Okay. Moving forward, hopefully getting to the implementation of 90B or kind of next steps there, in my role as Chair of Procurement and Contracts, will there be an RFP for new train sets, if there is an additional opportunity to put more passenger rail on these new train lines?
So, we actually do have in process right now, new train sets. Those are the Aero train sets. They're slated to come online in the next five to six years. We have the order in now with Amtrak. And that would provide us not only increased amenities just on the trains themselves, because they're, right, nice new train sets, but that does also provide us, it's right, additional train sets. So, we have the existing ones that would increase the number that we have available.
And would the seats, passenger seats available on those new train sets be the same or greater than the current Amtrak train models that we use?
Are you talking about overall passenger?
Capacity, passenger capacity.
I believe, yes, they're approximately the same.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So, just in terms, again, of timeline, I think the theme that you'll hear from us here today is, we're with you, we're excited by the opportunity before us, but we need to move, right? Conversations are important, planning tools are important, but action wins the day. And so, you know, as we are responsible to the constituents that we represent, what do you think is a realistic timetable for us to be able to tell our constituents that, again, there won't be necessarily these new trains on the track, ready to go in a year or so, but they'll be able to know that this work is actually starting, that there are, hopefully, our friends in labor out there making sure that we have opportunities to build these tracks and find these right-of-ways figured out. What kind of timeline do you think is realistic for us to be able to share with our constituents?
I think at this point in time, again, I kind of feel bad for continuing to point to the corridor identification program and the work that we're doing now. I'm hesitant to get, give you a specific timeframe until we've had a chance to truly evaluate everything, determine which projects we would think should move forward through that pipeline. It is a delicate and complex process, again, multiple stakeholders. We work with the railroads, we work with Amtrak, we work with the local communities where these projects are ultimately going to be, and all of those considerations need to be taken into consideration as we move forward to flesh everything out.
My final question is, as you're going through those considerations, is there a model of another state in our nation that has perhaps somewhat similar relationships to a privately-owned rail company, whether it's CSX or someone else, that we're modeling after, or that we can have lessons learned from in terms of their ability to have converted and increased their capacity for speed on passenger rail?
You know, Senator, I'm glad you asked that question. And actually, I realized that I maybe missed an opportunity to address a point, actually, that Senator Liu brought up, when you were talking about high-speed rail between Boston and New York. This is just along the lines of what are other states doing with respect to their high-speed rail programs? Obviously, you have California. Senator Liu, you mentioned just that segment between New York City and Boston, and I did just want.
Well, it connects several cities also.
Correct. I wanted to just clarify, that program that was highlighted is actually the same corridor identification program that New York is in now with the Empire Corridor. So, they are kind of going through that same process. In Massachusetts, we are a stakeholder in that sense, it will travel into New York. But they're going through that same planning process that we are identifying projects, and they're probably going to be along a similar trajectory. I will also make a comparison to Florida and the Bright Line. The Empire Corridor is actually 463 miles of corridor along, in New York State currently. The Bright Line's corridor is, I would say, let's see, they've got about 60 that are currently, 60 miles currently in service. What they want to do is expand that out, so additional 160 or 170 miles. So, actually, New York State's corridor is longer and more expansive than what they would be doing in Florida. The Florida Bright Line also, only 17% of that corridor, by the time everything is planned, is supposed to hit 125 mile-per-hour max speed. Most of the rest of the corridor currently, right now, is actually operating at the 90 mile-per-hour, well, 79 to 90 mile-per-hour limit. So, it's actually very comparable to where we are in New York State. So, I would say, yes, that there has been a lot of focus on announcements about high-speed rail investments going on in other states, but they are kind of actually very similar to where we currently are in terms of looking to better advance projects and improve the passenger rail experience in the state.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Senator Oberrocker.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Assistant Commissioner, for your testimony here today. One of the nice things about being last in the batting order is that most of the questions have already been asked and answered in a very concise and positive manner. So, for me, it's more of a chance to, number one, Assistant Commissioner, to tell you that I support the project moving forward. I think the concept is sound, and as one who has traveled all over the world and has experienced true high-speed train service, it's not only, when done correctly, efficient, but enjoyable. So, I'll leave it at that. I am in favor of the 90B concept as well, moving a lot of freight, as I do in my professional capacity. It's always nice not to have to worry about freight issues and be more or less trying to pick winners and losers when it comes to who's moving what, whether it be human or freight. So, I like that idea. I think it's kind of appropriate that we're talking about replacing a Civil War-era bridge and also a conversation that's been 30 years in the making. So, it seems like we have, we do have an initiative to move forward and to do so expeditiously, communication being a key part of that, moving forward. And I have one question that did come up. So, we're talking about the new Aero train sets, correct? Are they, or could they, or is there any thought given to them to utilizing green energy as a way of locomotion, I guess?
Yes. Some of the locomotive sets that will be part of that overall order of Aero train sets that we have in place will use electric propulsion, at least to move through parts of the system.
So, that's part of the infrastructure as well, that would have to?
Only, yeah, in parts.
In parts, okay, great. Lastly, I think a lot of this, in my experience, on many levels, both county and, of course, now in the state, we don't tend to celebrate our successes enough. And that's something I think that would help not only move this project along, but be very helpful to us in the committee too, to know the successes that are being accomplished. So, with that, thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity to talk, and thank you to my colleagues for the great questions. You made my job a lot easier today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I do have some more questions, Assistant Commissioner, and again, thank you for all of this testimony. I think it's very important. Does New York State produce a regularly updated rail plan, like it does for its road capital needs?
We are actually in process of kicking off a new rail plan development currently. That'll be taking place over this next year.
Okay. And as a part of that rail plan, in recognizing, you know, this process, again, 35 years in the making, and this EIS that came out, and, you know, we're working to move forward with this preferred alternative of 90B, should we commission a new study specific for high-speed rail to complement what's happening in the other areas of the eastern seaboard, Boston, New York City? Is now the time, in 2024, seeing that it took 35 years to get to this point, and we're not talking about high-speed rail, 155 miles an hour, should we commission a new study to connect the upstate, western New York, Buffalo, Niagara Falls, Toronto region to our downstate community via a new study?
I think, Senator, that we're always happy to work with you and to answer any questions that you have. At the end of the day, what we're hoping to do is increase passenger speed across the board for the corridor around the state. That is what we're focused on now. I think we definitely heard all of you, thank you, for your input, on trying to be aggressive about that. And we are just focused on trying to make sure that we can get the improvements in place so that we can start achieving that, show some progress to the people of New York, and, again, keep working on our plans and make sure that we are increasing speed, providing efficiency, and hopefully, enhancing service to the best of our ability.
Now, I understand that, but we're talking about two different things. We're talking about enhancing passenger rail, which we're looking at, but we're also talking about high-speed rail. Do we need a new study for high-speed rail?
I think at this point in time, we probably need to best see where we land with the service development plan coming out of the corridor identification program, to best determine and see how we land, how we increase speed at the end of the day.
So, given what's coming out with the potential for high-speed rail between Boston and New York City and the eastern seaboard cities, with true high-speed rail, you don't necessarily feel it's a priority to put in a high-speed rail study specific outside of this enhancement of passenger rail for the upstate region? of passenger rail for the upstate region?
I don't think that that's what I said, Senator. I mean, I appreciate your point. And I think we are going to look to work with you and make sure that we are keeping all stakeholders informed and make sure that we're working in lockstep to try to advance the vision of the corridor and certainly to see what the best possibilities are as we move forward. I think the issue being, we've looked at some of these issues already. If you're talking about high speed in excess of 150 miles per hour, it's, that's part of what was looked at in the Tier One. And I think at this point in time, what we're hoping to do is really just advocate and advance the projects that we know will help increase speed.
Okay. Let me, I will break it down a little bit. We know that along the Empire State Corridor, that the high-speed 125 mile-an-hour alternative was not the alternative that was preferred. So that quasi-high-speed rail alternative, high cost, large timeframe, difficulty implementing, which is why 90B was preferred, but that's an enhancement of passenger rail. I think we've all agreed upon the fact that we're moving forward with that alternative today. You've heard all of our collective support. That's not high-speed rail. And so, given the fact that it's not going to work, as has been suggested under this current alternative study, should we do another study that looks at a connection between New York City and the downstate region and Buffalo, Niagara Falls, Toronto, not necessarily along the Empire State Corridor, but maybe down through the Southern Tier?
Certainly, I think we're happy to look at any suggested alternatives that might help increase speed. You know, I don't know that that is one that I have looked at personally in terms of looking through the Southern Tier, but we're happy to have conversations.
Okay, thank you. We will have those conversations, Assistant Commissioner. Thank you very much. I want to go back to the passenger rail piece of this and just, again, further note what my colleague Senator Lou had mentioned and Senator Cooney had mentioned about the connectivity of the economy. And this is really a perfect time to have this conversation and to really implement this vision. And I know the governor shares this vision and has led on the vision of connecting our entire state, including upstate, with the downstate economy, with the investment of Micron in central New York and Syracuse. Tens of billions of dollars that will be invested in the central New York region over the next decade. The jobs that are going to be created, the enhancement of passenger rail with the 90B alternative in an expedited fashion, as these jobs are coming online, would allow people in Buffalo, Niagara Falls, Rochester, Albany, very simply jump on a train in their respective communities and go to work and go home in that same evening with reliable service that doesn't exist today. So is there something that we can do to examine the economic impact that, or has it been done, of putting in place this 90B alternative?
I think that's some of what we'll probably be looking at as we look to flesh out, again, the program that will come out of the corridor identification efforts. I mean, I think at this point in time, we're still early on. I don't know that I have economic impact stats to share on anything right now. As you mentioned, I think it starts to get complex, right, with the investment of a lot of new development for projects like Micron and others. And so certainly, I think it's something that we'll be looking at as we move forward.
Great. And then, but it makes sense. The federal IIJA provided for record level of infrastructure funding, including for passenger rail, but that funding was only five years. How are we positioned and how are we taking advantage of that moment, that five-year window that the federal government, and how are we positioning ourselves to go after federal dollars? And I think that goes back to a question I had earlier. What can we do now in this budgetary moment to help leverage federal funds in the immediacy?
So I think, as mentioned, obviously Livingston Avenue Bridge is the project that we prioritize. There is a lot of federal rail dollars that went out under the BIL. We did apply for at least eight other projects through multiple different FRA discretionary grant opportunities. A lot of them, again, were focused on, they were, some of them were planning projects. Some of them just focused on things to straighten curvature along the Empire Corridor line to try to increase speed. They were things that were signal projects that can help prioritize trains, again, helping to, at the end of the day, increase speed and efficiency and provide for additional interlockings throughout the corridor. So, again, we had a very robust set of applications that went to USDOT, and we will continue to pursue those opportunities and would definitely appreciate anything that could be done to advocate for our projects on the federal level.
Yeah, certainly. My goal is to make sure New York State is positioned to leverage that influence in dollars. So, you know, just going back a moment, look, I know we all agree upon the Livingston Avenue Bridge has to be done, needs to be done. But outside of that, what people really want is a dependable, reliable, timely passenger rail service. And we've come up with that alternative. What can we do, and I've asked this a few times, but I just, I'm looking for specifics because I think my colleagues, I think we want to move something forward in the Senate one-house budget for conversation. What is your suggestion as to low-hanging fruit? What can we do in the simplest of forms to advance this next step in the process to leverage that funding?
I think at the, again, at this point in time, I don't have specifics. We're building those out right now as part of our planning process for the corridor identification program. I think that there is a wealth of opportunity as we move forward there. Right? Now, actually, as you've mentioned, is the time, you know, I think you've identified it, Senators, that this is the best time to look at that essentially set of projects, determine what we really should be focusing on, what makes the most sense, what helps get better, reliable traffic between, in particular, Albany and Niagara Falls, looking at those, at those projects, looking to see where it makes sense to add track. But, again, further fleshing out some of those projects and looking at them, we're still kind of in development to really best provide more specifics on it. We're just, again, they were conceptual in the Tier One EIS. It's a great list to work off of because they had, again, bucketed kind of into little five-year groupings what the capital investment should be to advance the corridor. And I think, once we have the opportunity to, which we're doing now, relook at all of that, relook at what projects can move quickly, what would be, as you said, low-hanging fruit, we'll be looking to advance specific projects.
Okay. And then, what are the major rail improvements that would have a significant impact on reducing travel times that can be funded and accomplished very quickly, say, within the next five years?
I think we actually have a few of those as we start to move forward. I mean, the improvements that we're looking to do at Ryan Cliff Station that I mentioned was one of the FRA-funded projects will make a difference. Again, the interlockings there will help improve the speed travel time through there. You know, we have some planning projects in place as we look to see, I don't know if you've taken the train through, from Albany to New York, where you have that Hudson line, the Hudson Station. Sometimes you get a little held up there. It's because there's a grade crossing there. We're looking to see what improvements can be made there. Again, that project is in the planning phase, but once that is done, if you're not essentially waiting for the grade crossing, for pedestrians to be able to pass, we're looking at potentially providing overpass to improve speed there that could cut off, you know, 15, 20 minutes of stops that sometimes happens at that location. So all of these improvements, as you take them as the package, every, every single one of those does help increase speed, moving all along the corridor as you move from New York City or west, or coming west to south.
Yeah, thank you, Assistant Commissioner. And, look, I've heard suggestions that the implementation of the enhanced passenger rail service could take up to 25 years. Please tell me that's not factual.
I think that reference, and thank you, Senator, for highlighting that, that reference is the conceptual program of projects that was lined out in the Tier One EIS. That was just kind of our best guess at the time when it was first developed. It just chunked projects into five-year periods over essentially 25 years. Where we are now, with the corridor ID designation and the ability to go through and better flesh out the service development plan, relook at that package of projects, hopefully, we should be able to identify a way to help advance things so that maybe it doesn't take 25 years. But, again, still in that process of trying to better flesh it out.
I think we all can agree, it cannot take 25 years. I mean, the suggestion to me is just obnoxious. The thought of 25 years to make changes that people are looking for today is just absurd, especially since this started 35 years ago. And this, Assistant Commissioner, I know you agree with us, is our moment to move this forward, which is why I am asking the questions that I'm asking, so we don't wait another 35 years and have nothing to show for it, or 25 years before we have something that will be obsolete at that point in time. So, any other questions for my colleagues? Commissioner, Assistant Commissioner, thank you so much for your testimony today. We look forward to working with you and the DOT to do everything we can to move this preferred alternative forward and look into the future of high-speed rail here in New York.
Thank you. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak.
Thank you very much. Next, we are going to have Corey Engel, the Secretary Treasurer, Secretary Treasurer of the Brotherhood of Locomotive Engineers and Trainmen, New York State Legislative Board. Mr. Engel, thank you.
I want to start off by saying thank you for-
Take your time, take your time.
For allowing me to speak here. Yes, that's right. I'm, my name's Corey Engel. I actually work for Amtrak and right out of Albany, so I'm glad to be here. I am Secretary Treasurer of the New York State Legislative Board for the Brotherhood of Locomotive Engineers, also the legislative rep for our local division out of Albany, New York. 26 years on the railroad. I started with freight. I've been with Amtrak for 19 years now. Well, it was fun listening to everything was said here, the questions and everything. My personal thought is the biggest problem is going to be with the freight railroads, with their property. They don't want us there. They don't care that we're there. They don't, they don't care if we're building anything on their property, for sure. They had sightings throughout their, from Albany to, or should I say, from Hoffman's all the way out to Buffalo, and they took them out. So it's double track. They used to have sightings, and they took them out recently. So they don't have any desire for us to run on their tracks. I know they don't have a choice right now, but we currently have 24 miles of 110 miles an hour from Schenectady down to New York City, and a 17-mile stretch and a seven-mile stretch. The rest is basically 90-mile-an-hour track. There is a stretch of territory from Schenectady to Hoffman's, which is where CSX takes over, that is still single track, that would require a second track. So that is still a bottleneck there, especially if there's going to be any more train traffic. Currently, right now, it is only passenger trains, six a day, so, or seven a day, I'm sorry, or eight a day, I'm sorry. But the infrastructure can't really handle higher speeds at this time, as we all know. It will be extremely expensive to upgrade things. I don't know where the numbers come from, but tomorrow it's going to be higher than today. So it's, the expense is just going to continue to climb. And then incorporating the PTC is another issue, because higher speeds means more safety. Don't know what else you want me to say about this, but that's basically my synopsis.
Questions, Chairman?
No questions.
Senator Lou.
Thank you. Thank you for, thanks very much for joining us in this hearing. Would you like to see better rail service and more service?
I would love to, yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make, just wanted to make sure that we're clear about that.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yes, yeah.
And do your members, have your members seen an increase in passenger use of the rails, or has it been kind of steady in recent years?
It was, there was a definite increase up until COVID, you know, and everybody, that put a real hold on things, and it's definitely coming back since then. Our ridership is drastically climbing. So, yes, absolutely, yeah.
All right. So I just wasn't sure, wasn't sure what to take away from your testimony.
Yeah, I'm a definite advocate.
Your members would like to see more and better rail service?
100%, yes.
And the experience on the ground that you're experiencing daily, you meaning your members, you're seeing, before COVID, there was already an increasing ridership.
Yes.
And obviously, during COVID, everything plummeted, but things are coming back very quickly.
Yes.
You also mentioned that it would cost a lot of money.
Tremendous amount of money.
Well, is it too much money, or do you think it's worth the investment?
I definitely think it's worth the investment. I mean, every other country in the world invests 100% in their passenger rail systems. I don't see any reason why we can't.
And what, do you have affiliates in other states, or is your union primarily New York-based?
Oh, no, no, we're the whole country.
So what, or maybe some of the other affiliates in states saying where there is a plan to increase rail service and to improve it, whether it be high speed or just better service?
So the corridor between Washington, D.C. and Boston is-
The Northeast Corridor?
Yes, Northeast Corridor. There are, I mean, I don't know what you consider high speeds. There's 125 mile-an-hour track and 150 mile-an-hour track on there. Not a lot of 150, but there is. To upgrade from there, I don't even see it being possible. I mean, the-
Well, I think it could be possible.
Okay, well, I-
But, to the Chairman's point of view, I don't, we're not even talking about high-speed, high-speed, like, you know, 200 miles per hour plus.
Right.
Just better speed and more reliable service, more frequent service, more reliable service, on-time service. That's, the Northeast Corridor seems to provide much of that.
Yes.
And even then, they're looking to increase service, at least from New York City to Boston. So, you know, it might help us or arm us with more information if you could perhaps talk to your affiliates around the country, particularly in states where they are investing in better rail service.
Okay. Okay.
And so that would give us more comparators to, to use in our support for better rail service in New York State. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, thank you.
Senator Cooney.
Thank you, Chair, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Engel, for being here. Appreciate your service on the tracks and kind of building off of Senator Lou's question related to your affiliates in other states. And if you don't have the answer, you know, please come back to us after the hearing today. But I'd be curious to know what type of role that your brothers and sisters in labor have played in pushing these types of projects. I mean, we're, we're dreaming big here.
Oh, yeah.
Because the people that we represent need us to dream big and to push the envelope. As I said to the Assistant Commissioner, you know, we've been having this conversation for a long time. Where's the beef, right?
Right.
We got to see the action take place. And so organized labor has a history of, of being on the right side of so many of the improvements from infrastructure to transportation to healthcare policy in New York. And so your brothers and sisters in labor should be at the table from day one, which is why, of course, Chair Kennedy has invited you to be here today. But really, the role from advocacy perspective, whether it's funding, whether it's regulatory changes with what you said about some of the CSX and Amtrak interplay, I'd be curious to know how active they've played, whether in Florida or California or some of the other places around the United States that we've seen rail increase. So I don't know if you have any comments on that right now?
I don't have information for you.
But if you could kind of do some, do some investigation within the union and, and kind of share that back with, with Chair Kennedy's office, that would be really helpful to me. Because again, I think those of us who are so supportive of organized labor, we want to see a voice and, you know, obviously, more jobs to be created by putting more passenger rail cars on, on the tracks. Just, again, just to be on the record here, Chair Kennedy talked about the opportunity for exploring a high-speed rail option in addition to the 90B plan, right? So moving beyond the, the rail track that we currently have from the Capital Region to Western New York, maybe there's an alternative plan with funding opportunities for a higher-speed rail that Senator Lou talked about, that 200 mile per hour plus that goes a different route, right? Hudson Valley and up, as Senator Kennedy talked about. Just for the record, you would be supportive-
100%.
-of having additional rail lines, whether it's the 90B plan or high-speed rail.
100%, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
You'll back to the chair.
Thank you. So tell us a little bit about what you're seeing out there on the rail routes, where the choke points are, what's your interaction with CSX, what the, the general needs are of the system, you know, and, and give us your experience maybe of border crossings, that sort of thing.
I currently run to Montreal on the Adirondack. That's my run right now. So that's where, we actually aren't seeing too, too big of a delay at the borders right now. They've been relatively smooth.
With freight rail?
Actually, for customs. We haven't had any really freight traffic or anything going up that way.
Uh huh.
Besides, I mean, the, the big thing last summer was the, as everybody knows, was the speed restriction they were implementing on us. And I was working then, then as well. Going out west, a big bottleneck is, is DeWitt Yard, Syracuse area. It, it always has been. It's, it's slow traffic through there. The speeds are slowed down dramatically, and they, it's a big hub for the freight trains. So that has always been a bottleneck.
So the 90B alternative that you heard-
Yes.
-today with a, a third and in some places a fourth rail to divert passenger rail around freight rail, you believe that that would be a, a superior alternative to what exists today to move people?
Absolutely, yes, yeah, yeah, dramatically.
Okay.
Yeah.
And anything else you'd like to add?
No, not at this time. The, we're waiting for that Livingston Avenue Bridge, that's for sure, yeah. That's a big, yeah, concern.
All right, fantastic. Any other questions, gentlemen?
No, Chair, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you very much, Senator.
All right. Have a great day.
You as well.
Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to hear from Gary Prophet, the President of the Empire State Passengers Association.
Good morning. Committee Chair Kennedy, along with the Senate Transportation Committee, is here today. Thanks for having this hearing, so we can provide feedback on the 90B, along with improving passenger rail across all of New York State. My name is Gary Prophet. I'm the President of the Empire State Passengers Association. We're a statewide advocacy organization, working on behalf of intercity passenger rail riders for more reliable, more frequent, and shorter trip times for Amtrak service across the state. We also have parallel interest in downstate commuter rail network and local transit everywhere, including Metro Rail in Buffalo and bus service throughout the major cities of the state. Today's hearing comes at a critical time with regards to last year's very quiet release of the FRA's Record of Decision approving New York State's Tier One EIS for a package of service improvements and infrastructure reconstruction and expansion projects for the Empire Corridor. New York State DOT has federal approval to begin work on a package of passenger rail improvements that are referred to in the Service Development Plan. We believe that it's a particularly good plan based on the approved 90B option in the EIS, and there's opportunities to make it even better if the state wishes to. Yes?
Looking at your testimony, which is nine pages, and just for the purposes of time and to have the conversation we need to have, if you could just-
Yes, I'm skipping a bunch in the middle.
Broad points, right?
Yep, that's what I'm going to do.
So we want to, we want you to, we want you to hit everything in here.
Yep, yep.
But do it in a way where it's-
Yes, I, I already have planned to do that.
Brilliant.
Step ahead of you on that one.
Of course you have. Thank you.
So in this plan, it's got a, a bunch of capital improvements, of spending of about 350 million a year for 25 years, which we talked about earlier, including additional round trips from New York to end in Saratoga to start in the spring of 2026. Obviously, that area is not on CSX. It is seen as possibly easier to do without as many capital improvements, and there's much demand for service from Schenectady and Saratoga to and from the New York City area. In addition, we believe that the Service Development Plan has much to provide dependable and much more frequent service to passenger riders throughout the state. The plan does have a couple of shortcomings. First of all, the 25-year implementation, we believe, is unacceptably long, as was talked about earlier. Central and Western New Yorkers should not have to wait 10 years to see the first additional train frequency, which is what the current plan has. Second of all, the plan assumes nearly all the improvement work starts in the Hudson Valley. Projects further west only begin in the sixth year of the program, and then only limited work on the Niagara branch and a few additional projects in the Mohawk Valley. We believe that this implementation schedule must be accelerated, and that more work needs to be done in Western New York in order to provide benefits to travelers across the state of New York. ESPA has raised many issues regarding high-speed rail and staffing. We, we believe that the Capital Projects Group and the Office of Design need many more bodies in order to focus on such a large project. Although they've done a very good job in recent times with the station projects that have been done, this represents a whole new level of requirements of implementation when you're talking about a multi-billion dollar plan, or looking at it per year, a few hundred, a few hundred million dollars per year. It would also appear that the administration has focused the passenger rail funding on downstate with a very large pool of federal passenger dollars available for the Northeast Corridor. New York has done exceptionally well there, receiving billions for various projects from the Pelham Bay Bridge and Metro North Access to Penn Station and the Gateway Project. While funding for the upstate projects continues to come from a different pot of FRA funds, it's generally, generally believed that the federal government takes geographical allocations of funds into account when it awards, when it, account when it provides grant awards process. We need to make sure that upstate is also receiving enough of these funds in order to improve intercity rail service across the state. At last week's budget hearing, various things were mentioned as far as being able to provide better service upstate for capital projects. There's plenty of capital projects which can be done, some of which was mentioned earlier, for various choke points from Syracuse to having a third track across, across much of New York as detailed in the 90, in the 90B program. Part of the car, part of the call for this hearing was to hear testimony on whether the state's approved 90B service development plan was satisfactorily. ESPA believes that it is. With a shorter build-out, the service development plan can provide a more frequent, greatly more reliable, and shorter trip times for rail travel across the state. It's important to look at travel time savings that the 90B option would bring, rather than focusing solely on top speeds. Reducing a lot of slow, slow orders across the state, which currently can range from 50 to 60 miles an hour, and improving those to 79 miles an hour, or even 90 miles an hour, can provide much more trip savings than having large, than having small sections of 110 or possibly faster speed. We need to look at trip time and not just concentrate on the top speed of a few miles of track in certain locations. Let's compare the current train speeds in New York with the train speeds across Brightline. For example, the predominant current maximum speed, maximum speed in the Empire Corridor is 79, with speeds between 90 and 110 from Poughkeepsie to Schenectady. Brightline also has a range of speeds from 79 miles an hour in some of their urban southern areas, and raises up to 125 only for the small portion going from the East Coast across, straight across to Orlando. So they have implemented a, a series of improvements in their right of way in order to have some sections going 79 and some sections going 125. Likewise, there can be improvements to go more, more space between 110 south of Albany, for example, from Poughkeepsie to Albany, Poughkeepsie to Hoffman's really, could be much at 110, whereas west of Albany, west of Hoffman's, if you stay at 90, you can still have trip times that are much better than today. For example, trip times are often five hours today, and if the, from Albany to Buffalo, and if there's any type of delays along the way, that can easily be expanded to six hours. 90B reduces that down to about 420, four and a half, which basically is comparable or slightly faster than driving, assuming you make at least one stop along the way. I've included in there as far as the maximum trip times and the speeds, which I've included on, on page five of the, of the document. So if you want to take a look at that, there's a chart there that, that basically shows that. More importantly, ESPA does not see the legislator or the governor willing to commit billions of additional dollars necessary to comply with the requirements for speeds over 90. As the committee has learned today, the state is having a challenging time just initiating the approved service development plan. Calls for speeds above 90 west of Schenectady would just further delay the implementation of the approved 90 service development plan, which is what we endorse, and as you've heard today, several other people, including the DOT, has stated that that is also a very good option for, for the state of New York. To date, New York State DOT has had a relatively unsuccessful time in competing for intercity passenger rail grant funding under the expanded opportunities of the bipartisan federal infrastructure bill. There's lots of speculation as to why this is the case. The notion that the state and perhaps the federal government had focused on giving New York its fair share of funds from the grant program that is limited to use on the Northeast Corridor was discussed earlier. Clearly, in the recent announcement for grants outside the NEC, the FRA made a policy decision to go big. Three grantees received a total of $7 billion, and seven additional grantees were a total, a total of $1 billion. New York's several Hudson Valley and Capital Region projects, relatively smaller submissions, including the Livingston Avenue Bridge, went unfunded along with applications from other states. Much of the funding did go to California, and to Virginia, and for Brightline, for some of, for their projects, especially out west. New York has the opportunity to compete. Some of their strongest competitors, including Virginia, North Carolina, and Nevada, have already gotten large projects fully or partially funded. To the state's credit, the staff has aggressively submitted a number of applications for the Livingston Avenue Bridge and smaller state of good repair and upgrade projects in the Hudson Valley and Mohawk Valley. The next application deadline is February 28th for the RACE program, and the Livingston Avenue, Livingston Avenue Bridge meets the eligibility criteria to apply. The next round of CRISI funds also will open to applications in March. I've also listed some other projects and issues affecting New York State service, such as rebuilding the Reincliffe Station, which was mentioned earlier, some of the reliability issues. There's been an issue with plenty of locomotive failures already, because the locomotives currently used were built in the 90s and have passed their 20-year life expectancy. And there's some question about when the new train sets will, will arrive for the Empire Corridor, since we're at the back end of, of that list to supply the new Siemens train sets to various corridors across the country. Funding passenger rail, funding is a key to passenger, funding a key passenger amenity. The ESPA urges the legislators to fund one passenger amenity that's been missing from the proposed DOT Amtrak operating budget, and that's the reopening of the café food and beverage service on all Hudson Valley trains, which would be a noticeable passenger amenity that was discontinued to save a small amount of money about 15 years ago. DOT had planned to implement this service enhancement in the spring of 2020, but it was canceled because of the COVID pandemic, and obviously, everything having to do with that for the last couple of years. Service and ridership have been recovering well. It's time to reopen the food service at Rensselaer and provide café cars on all Hudson Valley trains. The café cars currently run on the Hudson Valley trains. They're just not staffed and do not have the food service on them because there's no way to, to restock them or stock them in Albany. In conclusion, for too many years, New York State has used the excuse that there was no federal funding available to advanced rail improvement projects. That claim is not generally accurate, that claim was not generally accurate over the last five years, and it is certainly not true today. Under past administrations, New York has simply lacked the will or interest to improve intercity rail service beyond the construction of new stations. ESPA urges Governor Hochul to commit the state DOT to develop a robust and public capital improvement plan for intercity rail service, and to implement the overdue enhancements to existing service to improve the customer experience. ESPA looks forward to continuing to work with the legislature, Amtrak, New York State DOT, on the implementation of the 90B improvement program and the day-to-day customer experience on Amtrak trains in New York. In closing, let me just return to the main theme of our testimony regarding the capital improvement projects for Amtrak service across the state. Time is short with only three years remaining in the enhanced federal infrastructure program. New York is behind other states that have rail projects much further along in the pipeline. Let's not miss any more of this opportunity. Let's also remember that the, over the last few years, there hasn't been a huge drive from DOT to improve rail service. This 90B plan represents a layout of items and capital improvements and service improvements, including additional trains, that would do a great service to increase the intercity passenger rail in the state of New York. This is a program that we need now. We do not need additional studies to see what else can be done. This has been studied for a long time. This has been approved and is the, has been approved by the FRA, and it's what we need to be doing at this time in order to improve the rail service for people across the state for the next few years. And then, of course, we can talk about the timeline as far as exactly how long it takes, which Senator Kennedy had mentioned earlier. So thanks for considering our testimony on the state of passenger rail today, and what the future of passenger rail should look like, and I'm here to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Prophet. I have some questions, but I'm going to start with Senator Cooney.
Thank you, Chairman, appreciate it, Mr. Prophet. Thank you for your testimony today. Thank you for your comprehensive comments in terms of the opportunities before New York. Let me just start by saying I fully agree with you, and I'm pretty sure my colleagues do as well, that 25 years to implement this next phase of rail access in New York State is absolutely unacceptable, and unacceptable to the people that we represent. To that point, though, my ears perked up a little bit when you talked about capacity, staff capacity, I believe in, I think you said the planning department or capital planning division of DOT. Perhaps we're understaffed. Chair Kennedy asked the DOT earlier about what low-hanging fruit there may be in terms of the budget, in terms of what resources we could provide to be able to help expedite this process. Could you kind of share a little bit more background about where we may be understaffed in terms of meeting the planning needs, capital planning needs of this next phase? in terms of meeting the planning needs, capital planning needs of this next phase?
I mean, as we look at it, even looking at the budget hearing last week, it's primarily the situation, good or bad, that a lot of people downstate are interested in transit. They're interested in the MTA. The budget hearing, that's where a lot of the questions went from downstate was regarding MTA issues, which is all transit, subway, Metro North, Long Island Railroad. Upstate, most people are thinking of highways. So they're talking about the throughway, they're talking about highways, they're talking about Route 17, they're talking about Route 81. They're more focused on highways. So, you know, whether it's a matter of moving resources, I mean, they just don't have the history or the background of dealing with, you know, $300, $400 million a year projects. They've primarily, as she said earlier, is dealing with, you know, smaller projects such as grade crossings, maybe a small enhancement here, station projects. They've done a fantastic job with stations, as Senator Kennedy has seen in the downtown Exchange Street Station, which is a lovely station that fits perfectly in that location and is much more welcoming, and ridership has been much higher in that station than it was prior to COVID. I think it's 30% or 40% higher than it was before COVID. That station was built actually during COVID. So the pre-COVID numbers kind of show what it was based on the old station. So the new stations are great, and that helps attract people because people don't want to go into an old falling apart station with the roof falling in. But once you have the station and you attract those people, you need to provide a service to them that's frequent and is on time and is basically almost at least as fast as driving a car. I mean, reliability is always an issue, but like she said, the reliability has actually been improving lately for the whole quarter. It's just around 80%. Obviously, it's much better south of Albany where the issue is, you know, where you don't have as much freight interference because the freight operates on the opposite side of the Hudson. But, you know, I just don't think they have a manpower system in place to be dealing with $300 or $400 million projects when they've primarily been dealing with station projects and small improvement projects. So can they? I most certainly can. Do they need, you know, I don't know whether they need assistance or not, but it's just not what they've been doing. So they need to look at that, or somebody else needs to look at that as far as funding and people goes in order to be able to ramp up. Because, you know, when you're talking about $300 or $400 million a year, that's a whole different level than talking about, you know, rebuilding a station, which is fine work, but it's a little bit different than building tracks.
You're essentially sharing that the scope is now dramatically increased, which requires just additional skill set, mindset changes, and perhaps more hands.
Now, maybe they have those skill sets and other people in the department that typically be doing highways, but as we've seen at the budget hearings, you know, MTA, it's all, you know, a lot of the transit focus is downstate, and that's what people question. Then you go to questions about upstate, everyone's talking about highways. So, you know, it's just a matter of the scope and what people are used to dealing with.
It's my expectation and certainly my hope that they can continue to do these great train station projects. I mean, obviously, we had that in Rochester a number of years ago. DOT was able to build Phase One of the intermodal station. We're hoping that they will look at Phase Two of the intermodal station now, but I understand your capacity for some of these bigger type projects. Let me switch gears a little bit to the state rail plan. In your testimony and in your materials you submitted, you noted that the state rail plan hadn't been updated since 2009. You heard the Assistant Commissioner this morning talk about how that is very much on their agenda to do. My question to you, you might have some more historical or anecdotal comments, but why has it not been updated since 2009? And if you could comment also, you mentioned Brightline earlier in Florida. When was their rail plan, if you know, last updated?
I don't know when their rail plan was updated. I mean, Brightline is a private company that's using their own rail and their own real estate to build stations and implement their own service. So it's a little bit different than New York State or Virginia that are partnering with freight railroads in order to do it. I know Virginia's updated their rail plan every four or five years to stay current with everything, and they got a big bulk of funding for their corridor from Washington down to Richmond and out from there and some of the improvements that Virginia wanted. So, you know, I don't know whether it just hasn't been a focus or hasn't been a need to. I mean, I have no idea why it hasn't been done, but, you know, when you're looking at something, I mean, if you're the FRA looking at something, you know, you're gonna look at somebody that constantly keeps everything updated and looks like they're enthusiastic, or you're going to look at things where maybe things aren't all updated. So this is just an example of something that needs to be updated so that the FRA and, you know, others can say, okay, New York State is serious about this. Now we have a 90B plan that's been approved, that's been implemented, you know, everyone agrees, it seems today, that from her to all of you, that 90B needs to be implemented. It's just a matter of the timeframe, and, you know, now it's time to start getting the ducks in the row in order to be able to get the funding for that, since obviously, you know, that's not all gonna be 100% state money. You're gonna have a mix of federal money in there, too.
But you are saying that there is a general correlation between states that have active or updated, systematically updated rail plans and their competitiveness for some of these federal dollars.
Yes, yes.
And Virginia was the example.
Yeah, Virginia was the example that I used.
And Nevada, I think you also mentioned, is also someone who has more competitive than New York, perhaps.
Yes, I mean, Nevada to California, that was also a Brightline, who's, they're actually looking at putting the rail down the interstate corridor. So that's, you know, a little bit different than what we're obviously talking about in the Northeast, whether it's, you know, service to Montreal or service across New York State. I mean, you know, Buffalo, Syracuse is not Las Vegas. I mean...
I don't know. The Bills did pretty well this year, so I consider it pretty exciting. Let's move on to the Aero train sets that the Commissioner this morning referenced in terms of our new procurement process. I think 2030 or so was the date to purchase those sets. In your written testimony, you talked about, shared some concern about their readiness to meet the demand for passenger rail in New York. Could you comment a little bit about that further? I did ask her, you heard me earlier this morning, ask the Commissioner about the number of seats in terms of capacity. Would their capacity equal at least its current capacity? I'm thinking now, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, that that actually may not be the best answer if we're only going to be able to have our current capacity, not something greater, that perhaps frequency would actually increase. Could you comment on that?
Well, just as an example, without getting into too many details, most trains across New York State are four coaches and a café business car. So sometimes on weekends, there's a fifth coach and a business café car. So the capacity of the Aero train sets, only I don't think there's been an exact number listed, is somewhere around the equivalent of five and a half cars compared to the Amfleet coaches that are currently used on the Empire Corridor. So that means if, you know, you're operating a five-car train, the Aero train sets would be slightly larger. But for example, yesterday, I was on a morning train on a Sunday from Utica to the Albany area, and, you know, we had 350 people on a Sunday morning in late January. I mean, you know, that's just about what the capacity is of the Aero train set. So if you have that on a Saturday, on a Sunday in late January, I mean, the ridership, you know, is much higher in the summertime. Do you really have enough capacity for that, especially since, you know, there's the guidelines in the 90B and, of course, restrictions with the freight railroads have the issue of, you know, you can't run a train every, you know, every 20 minutes across New York State. You need to run the trains based on when the agreement is with CSX, whereas if you can add a little bit of capacity, then you can provide, you know, obviously more seats for people. The other thing, which is historically, going back many, many decades in the Empire Corridor, is it's a very seasonal, very day-of-week-dependent type service. I mean, you've got Albany to New York, which you have a lot of business travel in and weekend travel, whereas western New York, you have a lot more weekend travel than you have weekday travel. So, I mean, there's always been talk about, you know, adding an additional train on the weekends or something like that, but capacity is certainly an issue when you're looking at weekend service to Niagara Falls. And like I said, I used my example yesterday, where you had 300 people on a train from Utica on a Sunday morning in January. So...
Well, I'll end my comments here, but hopefully our next speaker will be able to talk about increasing the train usage in upstate New York in terms of business growth, because I do think what we do see on the Empire Corridor could be replicated upstate if we had, again, more frequency and shorter times in terms of attracting new riders, new businesses, in terms of our growth of commerce. I'll end by saying that I would agree with you on the key passenger amenity. We call that the "Lou" amenity, as members of the Senate, having an extra rail car focused on food. But we will get there. We will get there, Senator Lou.
Like I said, the...
With your vision and leadership, we'll get there, Senator.
The café car, because it also contains business classes, is still on every single train between New York and Albany. So the café car is there. It's just not stocked with food and doesn't have somebody there to sell the food. So, you know, there's no change of equipment. All you need is the food stocked in the Albany station, which is already a place for it to be done there, since it was done, and, you know, the space has not been reused. And then you need somebody to do it, which, of course, as we know, coming out of COVID, Amtrak, along with everybody else, has had staffing issues, but, you know, they've gradually getting, you know, gradually been hiring more and more people also, so...
Thank you. You're back. Senator Lou.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us in today's hearing and your thoughtful comments. I think Senator Cooney addressed many of the issues already, and I know Chair Kennedy has some more. My main question for you is, it seems like your association is pretty much in line with what the Department of Transportation testified today, that the focus should be on better service as opposed to the high-speed rail.
Yes, I was very pleased, listening to her, I was agreeing with, you know, especially when she started out the, started out her testimony as far as the issues with the high speed. I mean, once you go above those speeds like she talked about, and she had a whole range of issues in her testimony, even more details than I do, you know, you just run into cost issues, land use issues, just getting through some of these places, when a lot of the problems are just not having enough capacity. You just have two tracks. You've got currently eight passenger trains a day. If you want to go to 10 or 12 passenger trains a day, plus you have the issue of the, being able to pass the slower freight trains. You don't really have any capacity to do that. And then you also, in upstate New York, have various yard facilities, like was referenced with Syracuse, where you run into congestion with the passenger trains, obviously aren't stopping at the freight yard, but you run into congestions with the traffic coming in and out of the freight yard. So, you know, there's a lot that could be done to save that extra time to make the train more, to make the train faster and more reliable, but going to, you know, certainly at this time, going to that 125, 150 miles an hour, where you're talking about a new right-of-way, new equipment, I mean, you know, we might be at that point in the future, but at this point, we just need to improve what we have now, which probably should have been done a long time ago, but as was mentioned, a lot of times, then people are like, well, you know, why should we make these improvements if we're gonna go to 150 miles an hour in 10 years? Well, let's just make the improvements that we need now, get the service better, get the service so you can reliably do four, four and a half hours between Albany and Buffalo and not have five hours, which sometimes is six hours if there happens to be a freight train leaving in and out of Syracuse Yard or a freight train breaks down somewhere, and just get an extra track there as the plan mentions and all the other details, as she had mentioned, the package of rail improvements, which, you know, if you look at each one, none of them are really terrific, but you look at the whole package together, and you can really make a difference in the passenger service across the state, and then you're providing better service, more reliable service to more people, which then ends up bringing in even more passengers and getting people off of the highways also.
So you're saying, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good.
Don't let perfect be the enemy of the good, yes. That would be a good quote, at least not in the short term. I mean, long-term is different, but we gotta get to the point where we have, you know, we don't have...
Well, short-term seems to be 25 years.
There's no reason short time could be 25 years. You can make...
I was appreciative of Senator Cooney's questions to you about the current rail plan in the State Department of Transportation. Apparently, it's 15 years old, and it hasn't been updated yet. And your testimony, I would say, is more than critical. It's potentially damning when you say that, not to you.
Right.
When you say that the federal government could have been less willing to grant our state funds because of such an outdated or such an antiquated rail plan. So I think that's a point that we have to take very seriously, and we may have to light some fires. My last question to you, and, you know, it's not an easy question to answer, but none of this is personal. This is all about getting better rail service for all of our constituents and your members. How would you grade the state DOT? Or, you know what, let me not say state DOT, because as I said earlier, I think this has to go far beyond the DOT. How do you rate New York State in terms of its plans and vision for rail service in New York?
Well, the plans and vision look very good at 90B. The issue is, we've had plans before, and that doesn't necessarily mean they get done. So I would rate the plan of 90B an A. I mean, it's a very good plan that's gonna improve service for all passengers in New York State. Now you can look back and say, well, why wasn't this done 20 years ago? Well, you weren't here 20 years ago, I wasn't here 20 years ago.
So A for vision and plan, and what about for execution?
I don't know. It's still yet to be determined. I mean, like we all agreed on...
I think you do know, but you're too diplomatic.
Right. They've done very good with stations. Okay, so if you want to get into the grading system, I would give them an A on building new stations. They've done a great job. If you've been to the new Schenectady Station, the new Rochester Station, Niagara Falls, downtown Buffalo, those are fabulous stations. That's what they've concentrated on. They haven't done any of these type improvements for a variety of reasons, especially west of Albany, so I would say that you can't give a grade for something that isn't done yet. They have made some improvements for signal improvements.
Well, no, you can't give a grade for something that wasn't a plan but hasn't been done yet.
So that's, I guess, failure if it wasn't done, right?
Oh, wow, you actually said it. Okay, congratulations.
But if you look at south of Albany, if you go back 10 years, every single time there was a thunderstorm, the signals would go out, and you'd have service at like 10 or 15 miles an hour because the signals were out. At some point over the last five or 10 years, I think it was right around just before COVID, I may not be exactly right with the timeframe, there was a project which was New York State-funded to bury those signals so that they would not be subject to the weather and the wind and the snow and the ice, and that project was done, and that, as she said, that has drastically increased the reliability of New York to Albany. So, you know, they have done the improvements there. We understand that's where there's, you know, there's 12, 13 trains a day on that route. There's only four round trips a day west of Albany, so they have concentrated some of their work down there and made that service more reliable. Now it's time to go to the next step, which is exactly what 90B does, and we certainly are very happy with the FRA approval of 90B, along with all the package of infrastructure improvements that are in there. But like I say, our concern is, do they, you know, we know they have the staff to do small projects and station, do they have the capacity to do this? I don't know. Do they need capacity? Yes.
Thank you for your expertise and your candor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Professor. Let's talk about cross-border crossings. What can be done to improve the service between this side of the border and the Canadian side of the border, particularly at the Niagara Falls and Plattsburgh crossings?
Okay, well, there's been a plan in place, not a plan, but certainly ideas in place to move. I think there's actually a track 12 or 13 that's been identified in Montreal Station to be secured so that trains could come in there, and all customs of both US and Canada could be done inside Montreal Station. So for example, the train would go north from New York and Albany to Montreal. Once you got in Montreal, it would be in a fenced-in area, passengers would get off, and then would go through Canadian Customs. Going on the reverse, before passengers boarded the train in Montreal to come to New York, they would go through customs in the Montreal Central Station, then board the train, which would be on a secure fenced-in track, which I believe Amtrak has already had plans for this. It's just a matter of funding and probably agreements with whoever owns the station, and of course, you're dealing with a foreign country that has to agree to it, too. But that is obviously the best way where everything is done, the customs is done in there. Therefore, if there's one person that has some, you know, doesn't have the right documentation or something like that, you know, the rest of the people can proceed to have dinner in Montreal while they continue to iron out the issues with those one or two people. Whereas now, if there's one or two people that for whatever reason don't have the right documentation or have some issue, you sit at Rouse's Point just north of Plattsburgh for one, two extra hours, which could delay a couple hundred people going in. So the key to Montreal is rather simple. It's having that customs for both US and Canada done inside Montreal Central Station, which has already been, you know, identified as something to do, but there's a lot of agreements that have to occur for that to happen. For Niagara Falls, the new Niagara Falls New York Station is actually built so that it can handle both customs just by basically flipping a turnstile. So depending on the time of day, that facility could handle people getting off the train for, getting off the train, going through Canadian Customs, and then getting back on the train, and then the train can zip right to Toronto instead of getting off where there is no facility in Niagara Falls, Ontario, it would be much better, and it was designed to handle it, and the new Niagara Falls... to handle it, and then the new Niagara Falls, New York Station, where both US Customs can handle the customs for the people coming into the country from Toronto, and then the customs facility can be equally used by Canadian Customs, the same facility for, to, to have the trains taken care of at that same facility, as, and then go right into Canada and right to Montreal without having an additional delay at the Niagara Falls, Ontario Station, where people have to get off the train, walk outside, wait, go in the station and all that, which is very inconvenient for people, and, and also takes a very long time, so.
So the bottom line, the bottom line is preclearance?
Well, you could do the preclearance in Montreal, but you, in, in the case of Niagara Falls, you'd be doing it in the Niagara Falls Station, so that's not the same as preclearance, because the train, as you pull into Niagara Falls, people would get off there and go through the existing customs facility, reboard the train, and then you would go from Niagara Falls to New York, to Niagara Falls, Ontario, and then on to Toronto, but all the clearing would be done in one place, so you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have the, the additional stop at Customs in Niagara Falls, Ontario. So it's a little difference, and I guess it's preclearance if you're getting off or boarding in Niagara Falls, New York. If you're going from Albany to Toronto, you would just get off the train in a, in a facility that's meant for customs in Niagara Falls, New York, instead of getting off at the Niagara Falls, Ontario Station, which is not really built for customs and requires you to go outside into the station, loop around, and then wait to reboard.
All right, the bottom line is, we've got to work to enhance the ability for cross-border travel, and, and the convenience of passengers to be able to, to go over the US-Canadian border with ease, to enhance the economy and business and, and travel and leisure alike. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I would. I mean, one of the other items has to do with just procedure. I know, for example, coming from Toronto, when the train gets to Niagara Falls, New York, it literally sits there for two hours to go through customs. I understand usually customs takes about 45 minutes, so that extra time is really just for, you know, in case there's a couple people that have issues, so I don't know if there's any other way to handle that from a theoretical standpoint, but the, the issue is, the way it's currently done is, the, the two hours at the Niagara Falls, New York is kind of set there as basically the worst possible case, which most of the time doesn't happen because they want to obviously leave Niagara Falls, New York on time. So, you know, part of that has to do with, you know, do you have some way of checking people out, or not necessarily preclearing them, but analyzing them a little more thoroughly in Toronto before they get on to save that time, so you're not having to schedule in a full two hours in Niagara Falls, New York, which is excessive. I mean, pro, you know, 23 years ago, that used to be 50 minutes, but that of course was before, before the time of September 11th.
Or create a preclearance model that will allow that easy transition across the border.
Right. The only issue with the preclearance, if you did preclearance in Toronto, you do have stations of significant ridership between Toronto and Niagara Falls, New York. For example, Hamilton and Niagara Falls, Ontario itself are major stations, whereas going to Montreal, there's only one stop that's very lightly used between Rouse's Point and Montreal, so that's makes the preclearance in Montreal to be much easier because you don't have any additional stops.
You, you could also do varying routes, correct? You could do an express route from Toronto to Buffalo, or Toronto to Niagara Falls, that would allow that preclearance to take place.
Correct. If you add additional service, that makes it easier. As you know, today, there's only one train, so you can't, you know, you can't really have the express service, which gives you back to the other thing of, if you have more service, it gives you more options to do these things.
Right. Are you familiar with the bottleneck at the Buffalo-Canadian border for passenger rail traveling from the United States into Canada because of the, the freight rail customs that, that blocks the track? Are you familiar with that?
Um, yes, but the, the freight traffic uses a different, different route. The, the train traffic that goes across on the Whirlpool Bridge is not used by, is only used by passenger traffic, so the passenger train is not blocked by freight trains between Niagara Falls, New York and Niagara Falls, Ontario.
But there's a bottleneck that occurs, right, in that vicinity?
Um, I'm not familiar with a freight bottleneck. I know of north of Niagara, once you get north of Niagara Falls, Ontario into Hamilton, then you're dealing with the CN line that has some bottleneck, and then you're also crossing the Welland Canal, which is a bottleneck in Ontario, so that's-
Were, were you, were you convinced with the, the testimony today from the Assistant Commissioner about the 90, 90B plan? I know that you expressed your support for it, which I'm happy to hear, but the timeline, right? You had said nothing should take 25 years, we all agree, I think the Assistant Commissioner agreed, you know, tell me, tell me what can be done in your estimation, what can be done to expedite the process and get it moving as quickly as possible, especially with federal funding on the table?
With the federal funding on the table, they certainly can, if you look at the plan, there's like nothing for west of Hoffman's until year six or seven. So certainly with federal funding, some of those projects identified in the 90B plan can be moved earlier and be done in the first few years of the plan, instead of waiting after year eight in order to do some of the projects west of, west of Hoffman's. Obviously, that, you know, includes agreement with CSX, but some of the package of items that provides more capacity, also provides more capacity for, for CSX by having additional freight, freight track, or additional track along with the CSX two freight tracks that exist today. So accelerating some of those west of Albany projects into the first few years, instead of waiting till after year eight, would certainly be a plus, because if you have federal funding, you already have the projects identified, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, how quickly could we get like a track to buy easier bypass around Syracuse Yard? That's a common, common place where passenger trains are hung up.
Yeah, we don't want to wait any longer. I think we've waited long enough. So let me, let me ask you this, again, because, again, you've suggested your support for the 90B plan, I, I appreciate that, I support it, I think my colleagues, I think it was well-flushed out, again, took a long time to get to that conclusion, but what that does simply, as we've all discussed here again, is it enhances passenger rail, as it probably ought to be expected of passenger rail today, that, that it's not delayed by freight, that it has its own separate track that, that's built and created. It allows for the, the real issue of convenient travel between Niagara Falls and Buffalo, again, a 20, 20-mile neighbor to the north of, of Buffalo, but you, you can, no one can count on that rail service for anything, any day. It's, it's, it's terrible today. And so we've got to rectify that. 90B, the plan rectifies that, so we've got to move that as quickly as possible. So I think we can all agree upon that. That being said, high-speed rail, true high-speed rail as it exists conceptually today, as we discussed, is being considered between eastern seaboard cities, and is being constructed out west in California. In your estimation, is it worth, is it worthy of a, an investment of, of state dollars into the budget to study the connection between upstate and downstate and Toronto and the upstate and downstate communities?
I mean, it certainly is worthwhile, but we want to make sure that, looking at the perfect, getting back to what Senator said a little while ago, when you start doing that, then everyone says, oh, well, we're not going to do the 90B-
No, we're not, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking, we are moving forward with the 90B plan. Aside from the 90B plan of creating reliable, dependable passenger rail for folks upstate and downstate alike, and across this northeastern region, is, is an absolute must, and it must be priority for, for the state, and I think we've gotten that agreement. Aside from that, separate from that, we want to talk about high-speed rail in New York State. It's essential, as they're doing it in other areas of the nation and the world, to connect our economies, would you agree that an investment into a study of true high-speed rail is appropriate?
Yes, we should be studying high-speed rail, and we should also have probably a separate study to look at improving Buffalo to Toronto, because that's kind of its own, its own animal, because you're talking about, you know, from downtown Buffalo to Toronto, you're not even on the CSX Main Line, that actually curves after DePew, it actually takes a, a left turn to curve along the shore of Lake Erie. So from downtown Buffalo to Niagara Falls to Toronto, you're just on a small Niagara, it's called the Niagara Branch, which is a lightly-used line of CSX, it's not the main freight line that goes across New York State. So I would say that especially that could be a, a separate study in order to do downtown Buffalo to Toronto, because having Toronto just a couple hours away, I mean, I've driven from Buffalo to Toronto, I mean, I've done it in two hours, and one time it took me five or six hours, you know, it's, it's, once again, driving is not consistent to be able to get to Toronto, it's a very hard place to drive to, and once you get there, what do you do with a car? I mean, it's a perfect place to be able to take the train to, because the Toronto Station is right downtown, it's not a place where, you know, it's not really a place that's a great place to park, so the train service even from Buffalo to Toronto is, you know, kind of separate from trains that would go all the way from Albany to New York, is certainly something else that could be looked at, and you're not even on the CSX Main Line, which, as we've heard today, when you're on the CSX Main Line between Hoffman's and Buffalo, you have all kinds of other, you know, issues and compli, complications and compromises and agreements that have to be made in order to improve service.
Thank you. Well, look, I appreciate your, your testimony, Mr. Prophet, I, I just want to be very clear about one thing, number one, and I appreciate your support for this vision too, and your, all of your leadership and your efforts. I think the Empire State Passenger Association is essential to these conversations, and you've been a tremendous partner to me and my team in moving this vision forward, and I think to the whole state. But I want to be very clear about separating the two, you know? If, if you create that reliable and dependable rail service that we're talking about with 90B, that will enhance the ridership, enhance the economies, the connectivity to Niagara Falls, Buffalo, Rochester, Syracuse, Albany, and everywhere, all the other stops in between, and of course, the connectivity between the capital region and New York City, which today is reliable and dependable, I would argue, as it exists. I think one that resolves a portion of the issue we're, we're talking about here. But that, that ride from Niagara Falls to New York City would still take, on a, on a perfect day, upwards of seven hours, whereas a high-speed rail service could potentially get from point A to point B in two to two and a half hours, if done appro, if done appropriately, on a different track, separate from what we are talking about. So I think these are two separate conversations that deserve two separate prioritizations, and we look forward to working with you on both moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, just as a final comment to that, the other thing is that a lot of the people, especially even now more than before COVID, are not going the full length of the corridor. I mean, I, I was actually in central New York over the last couple days, and, you know, there were people getting on at Hudson, New York, and getting off in Schenectady because they were seeing a, they're meeting a friend, or seeing a movie, or doing something at the casino there, or Proctors. There are other people that got on in Albany, got off in Utica. I actually asked the conductor, I said, how many people are going from New York City to Toronto? This is on a train with about 300 passengers. He said, zero. There wasn't a single person going from New York City to Toronto on the, on the train on Saturday with about 300 people on it, not even one person. Yes, there were a couple people going from Poughkeepsie to Toronto, there were a lot of people going from Albany to Toronto, but a lot of times you don't have people going the full length, you have people going from, you know, New York City to Hudson, Hudson to Syracuse, Utica to Buffalo, Utica to Niagara Falls. Last time I went to Buffalo-DePew Station a couple months ago, as I was getting off the train, there was probably a line of 15 or 20 people that were getting on that train just to go to Toronto. So I mean, you know, you constantly have people getting on and off at all the places along, along the way to go to, you know, often going to the major places of New York City, Albany, Buffalo, Toronto, and then you got, you know, Rochester, Syracuse, and the smaller places in between, but, you know, especially with the 90B and with the rail service on the Empire Corridor, you can't just look at the endpoints, you have to look at all the service in between and all the people, you know, like in, where I live in Westchester County, we have a million residents. Well, those people are getting on at the Carrot and Harmon Station, which, you know, most people don't even consider that in New York City, whereas that's the station I usually use when I go somewhere. So, you know, if I get on there and go somewhere, I'm not even going, you know, I don't think I've ever even gone the full length of the Empire Corridor, so, because I'm usually getting on in the suburbs and then getting off at, you know, someplace upstate, usually when I'm traveling.
Well, again, thank you very much for your testimony, thank you for your leadership, your partnership, and we look forward to our continued work together.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a great day. Next up, we have, we're going to call on Andrew Williams, who's the Deputy State Director for the New York League of Conservation Voters. We're going to take him next. And then following Andrew's testimony, good afternoon, we're going to hear from Joseph Alston from the Business Council. Good afternoon.
Like you said, my name's Andrew Williams, I'm the Deputy State Policy Director for the New York League of Conservation Voters. We're a statewide environmental advocacy group. I wanted to say thank you Chair Kennedy, Senator Cooney, and the rest of the Transportation Committee for having me today. Achieving the greenhouse gas and co-polluent emission reduction targets set by the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, the CLCPA, will require significant mode shift away from personal automobile, auto, personal automobiles to mass transit and micro-mobility over the next 25 years. In practical terms, this means that inner-city passenger train routes must become faster and more reliable, with more frequent service in order to attract new customers who currently drive or fly between New York's population centers. Making these improvements to the state's inner-city rail system may be a costly and time-consuming endeavor, but the state government can make things easier by beginning to plan for these improvements right away. First, faster trains will require improvements to existing rail tracks, tighter coordination with freight rail and regional passenger rail routes that may share tracks with the inner-city rail system, and in some places, new tracks along new rights of way that allow for longer straightaways at higher speeds. Second, new rolling stock will be required both to achieve true high-speed rail and to provide more frequent service. Third, new engineers, conductors, station staff, and mechanics will be needed to hire, needed to be hired to staff the additional trains that provide more frequent service. And fourth, and finally, the state should ensure that passengers have access to the best-in-class websites and apps for purchasing tickets, planning their trips, and connecting with ease to regional public transit systems when they arrive at their final destinations. Some of these steps require long-term budgeting and capital planning, and the legislature may have to identify new resources, or sources of funding for this work. One potential source we think could be handy is funding when it is, funding from Cap'n Invest when it becomes available in the next couple of years. However, we know that Cap'n Invest revenue will be expected to fund a number of different environmental projects and climate mitigation, resiliency programs across the state. It's, it's unlikely that the Cap'n Invest alone can provide enough revenue to truly transform New York's rail system, so we do, you know, know that we're going to need additional funding to make that happen. Two low-cost steps that we think that the state can take right now are to comprehensively review the cause of delays in inner-city rail systems and identify ways to mitigate or avoid these issues, and to identify places in the rail system where train speeds can be safely increased above current levels. We believe that the Metropolitan Transit Authority's MTA's Safe, Save Safe Seconds campaign, launched in 2018, is an ex, is an excellent model to getting us to where we need to go. Thank you for the opportunity, for allowing me to testify today, and holding these hearings on such an important, under-discussed topic.
Senator Williams, I'm going to start by asking Senator Cooney for questions.
Thank you, Chair, appreciate it, and thank you for your testimony here this morning. Obviously, you, you mentioned the relationship between investing in mass transit and the goals of the CLCPA.
Yeah.
I often think that in the conversation around transportation access and infrastructure improvements, especially about mass transit, we don't actually hear the voice of environmentalists overall, or just the argument about the reduction of greenhouse gases. How do we work better to help emphasize that as a major driver for the rationale of making these critical investments? Because I think oftentimes, we focus on the amenities, or maybe the, the business side of the equation, but really, this is a solution for us to really help achieve the goals, the ambitious goals that our state has set out. Do you have any comments about how we could work better or help aug- Do you have any comments about how we could work better or help augment your voice in this process?
Yeah, and I mean, I mean, that comes down to making sure that we have reliable trains, we have reliable forms of transportation that aren't car-heavy, right? You know, to give people options to get out of their cars, to make that mode shift to more sustainable forms of transportation and that's going to come with, you know, investment. You know, I think like previous speakers today have mentioned, you know, going between Buffalo and Albany takes significantly longer, you know, by train than it does by car. You know, if we want to get people on the trains, we have to make sure that they're reliable. You know, we have to make sure that they're on time, that they're getting, you know, you know, getting to the destination faster and, you know, in more comfort than it would be if you were to take your car.
I absolutely agree. In fact, Chair Kennedy and I often talk about this as it relates to upstate bus transportation services and making sure that riders have frequency and reliability in their ability to maybe not use a personal automobile or use less automobiles in terms of the option of taking public transit. I think the same can be said for mass transit in terms of travel, certainly for those of us who are coming from western New York to Albany or other business travelers. I wonder if there's any, and if you don't have this off the top of your head right now, we welcome you to engage with Chair Kennedy's office afterwards, but if you could comment around other states and their climate action plans, how much they have involved with high-speed rail? We've talked today so far about California, some of the work in Brightline's doing around Nevada and in Florida. I wondered if you could comment about the relationship between high-speed rail or just rail in general, mass transit?
Yeah.
And climate action plans.
Yeah, you know, I guess tackling, you know, what other states are doing. I think California is a perfect example, you know, trying to put in high-speed rail. But i- in general, I guess the, the major concern is we, you know, for us in New York, you know, we have reliable service from Albany to New York City. It's not the case going from Albany to Plattsburgh. I've done that ride. I went to SUNY Plattsburgh myself and took the train home to my hometown stop in Fort Howard. That takes about three hours for what would usually be an hour and a half drive. It, it comes back to the fact that people want convenience. That's the point of the car, right? You know, a car is convenient. If we don't have that for other forms of transportation, that's not going to get people out of their cars. That's not going to get people to switch to taking the train when they can. And then also, when they get dropped off in a specific city, you know, if there's not reliable forms of transportation afterwards, you know, then they're kind of stranded. So that's a, that's another conversation, but something we need to tackle if we want to get people out of cars and, you know, onto trains.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a good point. We make these investments regularly every year in our budget, whether we're talking about the MTA in New York City or whether we're talking about upstate bus transit. We have that kind of connection point.
Right.
Once you get to the train station, but it's making sure that travelers or riders have the assurance that there's going to be something to get them from point A to point B fully.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that point. I guess my last statement is really more of a comment than a question, but really focusing in that this conversation today around investing in high-speed rail or higher-speed rail is really critical for us to advance the overall environmental goals that certainly the Senate majority has focused on, but wanted to make sure that we bring more stakeholders to the table.
Absolutely.
You know, we appreciate your leadership, your organization's leadership, but I think whether we're talking about procurement and what type of trains, train sets we purchase or the type of materials that are used in the construction of third or fourth tracks, that too should be part of the environmental justice conversation, making sure that we're not just doing, going about business as usual, but that we're being conscious of the materials that we use and this, and the, and the procurement of new trains that we build. You heard it earlier from an earlier speaker that we're hoping to have some sort of electric capability in terms of whether it's a dual-mode engine or what have you, but, but that needs to be at the forefront. And we have a little bit of time, it sounds like, from DOT, hopefully not 25 years' time, but that's something that we welcome your constant engagement in so that we're not missing opportunities to do better.
Absolutely. And just off of that, you know, the fuel technologies is such an important piece, you know, when we're talking about copoluents from, you know, mass transit, obviously, you know, taking a train is way better for the environment than taking a car, but also reductions in emissions from trains later on when we do get to that point, you know, that's going to be a huge conversation that we're going to have to have.
Thank you. Yield back, Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again, Mr. Williams. Thank you, Senator Cooney. Look, you represent the New York League of Conservation Voters. I've seen your testimony here, heard your testimony. Just break it down to us very simply, you know, talk about the increase in reliable service and how that helps the environment, just basically.
Yeah, yeah. So obviously, the more reliable the service, the more people are going to be taking the trains. Trains are significantly, you know, produce significant less emissions than, you know, automobiles. You know, obviously, you know, it's, it's not net zero yet, but it's going to get there eventually. And by having mass transit, you're going to reduce your emission output. So that's kind of the key, keep, one of the key pieces to transitioning to a more sustainable transportation sector.
And you mentioned the, how the, the infrastructure of the trains will become more environmentally friendly.
As, yeah, as technology, you know, advances, obviously, you know, I, I think aviation kind of, you know, is, is forefront in the news right now where the sustainable aviation fuel is being used more and more on, you know, longer-distance flights. The first transatlantic flight happened with sustainable aviation fuel. So those technologies are going to slowly penetrate other markets. Eventually, I'm sure it will, you know, penetrate the locomotive market. I'm not sure if there are technologies out there using sustainable fuels in, in locomotives, but, you know, that's going to hopefully develop, I'm sure, with other technologies as well.
Great. And how would you suggest we prioritize green versions of the new train technology?
It's a great question. I think, you know, at the moment, just keeping the dialogue open between environmental organizations, environmental justice organizations, you know, it, it sounds like we're, we're pretty far out before we're going to get to these conversations. So engaging with stakeholders like ourselves and learning more about what technologies are going to become available.
Okay, great. You mentioned the MTA Save and Safe Seconds Campaign in your testimony. Talk a little bit about what that is.
So this was actually recommended to me by my, my city colleague. I'm, I'm an upstate person, so I'll, I'll have to ask them to deliver some more information for you, but I can, you know, send that over to your staff.
Okay, wonderful. Anything else? Senator Cooney?
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Williams, thank you very much. Thanks for your testimony and look forward to our continued work together.
Great. Thank you, Senators.
Thank you.
And next, last, but certainly not least, Joseph Alston, the Director of Government Affairs for the Business Council of New York State. Good afternoon, Mr. Alston.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Kennedy.
Yes, sir. Sir.
Bit of a rough morning, but I finally made it.
You're here, man. You made it.
Uh.
Now, just don't tell us your train was late.
No. No, you know, my, the two-hour to three-hour delays for the.
No, we understand, but you're right on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So my name is Joseph Alston, Director of Government Affairs for the Business Council. And the Business Council of New York State supports the implementation of high-speed rail, that is, as it is the future of efficient and expedient travel within New York State. Currently, the only passenger train considered high-speed is Amtrak's Exceller train, which operates in the northeast corridor. With a population of 19 million residents and New York City serving as the financial center of the world, as being among the largest populated metropolitan areas on the planet, it is a no-brainer that New York must find faster and more efficient ways to travel. The northeast, specifically New York State, is primed and ready for this initiative, given substantial ridership, the economic viability and the state's thirst for clean and environmentally friendly ways of traveling. High-speed rail would function as an alternative to the constant congestion that plagues the state, offering other options other than airports and the highway systems to travel across the state. The entire proposed, proposed Empire Corridor Improvement Program build-out is projected to take 25 years to complete after the program is fully funded and the multi-year plan is determined. As of now, there is no projected start date. A study done by Utica College's Center for Small City and Rural Studies highlighted the introduction of the Exceller train, which netted a profit of $220.2 million, which is a profit of $64.8 per passenger versus the slower regional train, which made $146 million with just a profit of $19.06 per passenger. We believe the state is missing out on an opportunity that will enhance the economic outlook of the state as well as increase profits for businesses across the region, both big and small, which with the shortest trips, there will be greater reliability, which will add additional trains to travel, which could only increase ridership, possibly stop the out, out-migration trend that's been a negative blight on New York. I'll stop there.
Thank you very much, Senator Cooney.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it and thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
We've been anxiously awaiting your arrival because we agree with you completely about the relationship between Business Council members, I'm sure you represent, and other, and other business entities, and better access to high-speed rail or higher-speed rail. I know in my neck of the woods in the greater Rochester area, we've got large companies like Paychecks and others who would benefit from having commuter traffic or, as they do business across the state of New York, not have to use or rely on a personal automobile, but rather be able to use forms of mass transit that doesn't currently exist in a way that meets business expectations from frequency of routes. I'm wondering if you could comment though, more generally, on the statewide level of the opportunities that if, if 90B was to go into effect, the higher-speed rail or Senator Kennedy's vision for high, true high-speed rail, 110 miles per hour or more, that really difference-maker in terms of commute time, if those were to be implemented, do you think that we can better integrate the downstate and upstate workforce or at least opportunities for people to go back and forth between upstate cities like mine in Rochester or Buffalo and the New York City market? Is that, is that possible? Are you hearing that from any of your Business Council members?
Well, I think that with the implementation of high-speed rail, we've spoken to a lot of members and, you know, if, if such initiative was, was to take place, there would be expansion of business across the state. You know, in a post-COVID world, a lot of people are working from home, some, a lot of people are opting, you know what, I don't want to go all the way down there to, you know, New York City or I don't want to go upstate or whatever the, the, the case may be, but there are a lot of businesses that have said that they would expand and given the fact that they can reach a larger market as well as, in terms of employees, they can easily get to work three, four times a week on a faster rail service.
I always say, and Senator Kennedy's heard me say this before, that when we talk about our economic competitiveness as a state versus other states in the, in the Union, you know, it, it used to be about Rochester versus Buffalo. Not anymore, we're working very well together. It's really about Rochester versus Raleigh, North Carolina, right? And so recognizing that we're losing talent, whether they're coming out of our higher educational institutions or folks are just picking up and moving because of remote work opportunities to other states that are more favorable to have better transit options. And as a younger generation enters the workforce, transit becomes one of their priorities or values in terms of where they want to work, where they want to relocate, right? And so something that I think that we could do better in New York State is to give options for those workers in New York City who want access to great public schools or shorter commute times or access to the environment outside of the Five Boroughs, to be able to take that high-speed rail option and live upstate and then work downstate. And I think that's just an opportunity that we're not realizing well.
Right.
And I think the housing conversation that our governor is leading is an opportunity for us to kind of think more about the role that transit has outside of New York City. And so I appreciate your comments and kind of leading to that. I guess lastly, I would say, as we go through the budget process, Chair Kennedy has pushed the, our colleagues in the Department of Transportation to think more aggressively about some of these plans, whether 90B or high-speed rail. I hope that it would be of an interest to the Business Council and your members to become greater advocates for transit in New York, not just upstate, but across the entire state and mass transit.
Well, I, I think that, you know, one of the reasons why we support this initiative is because of a number of reasons, right? One, job creation. You know, statistics say that for every billion dollar that is invested, 24,000 jobs are created. And, you know, even when I saw that, I was like, wow. I mean, I'm wondering why New York State hasn't done this a long time ago. For every dollar invested, there's four dollars in economic activity that happens around the state. And, you know, when you're putting together this plan, whether it be, I mean, we, we hope that it will be shorter than 25 years. Of course, the, the 15-year mark is our target, but, you know, when you're putting together these plans, you're expanding, you know, different sectors, particularly the manufacturing sector. I mean, that already contributes to, what, $75 billion to the state's economy? So, you know, someone has to, you know, build the screws, the, the, I mean, create the screws, the steel, the steel and everything else needed, you know, to build these rails, which we believe would start with upgrading the tracks. So we think this is an extremely important opportunity for New York State to not only shore up its infrastructure, but bring high-speed rail, but also expand the economic activity throughout the state.
Well, I appreciate that and what I'm hearing you say loud and clear is investments in infrastructure and rail will create more jobs.
Absolutely.
And we know that's a priority of this governor and we know that's certainly a priority of the Senate majority, so we appreciate you making that point for.
Thank you.
Back to you, Chair. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Alston. Thank you, Senator Cooney. Just to expand on the conversation with Senator Cooney, you, you're clearly familiar with the Micron investment happening in, in central New York.
Right.
This plan, 90B, the enhanced passenger rail service between Niagara Falls and Schenectady, creating reliable, dependable, timely service with its own separate passenger rail line, you believe that that would be a real boon to the economy in upstate New York across the, across the board?
Well, I think so. I mean, even as Micron, you know, you know, you know, builds out their, their, their plan and their business and they're expecting close to 50,000 jobs, I mean, I'm sure that, you know, all of them won't come from Syracuse. So, and expect, you know, for a, a high-speed rail system and, and that particular corridor from whether it be west of Schenectady all the way to Buffalo, we, we're going to have a workforce that will need to come from near and far to do those particular jobs and to do those specialty positions. So we think it's very important and this would only help to, again, enhance the economy and to make Micron successful within, within New York State, given the investment that they're making as well.
So to your point, an investment in the 90B vision would be able to connect these cities, Buffalo, Niagara Falls, Rochester, Albany and other areas of the state by rail, dependable, timely, reliable rail to these 50,000 jobs.
Reliable is the key.
And we're talking about a $50 billion investment, up to a $50 billion investment that Micron's going to make right here in, in central New York. You know, look, at the, the 25-year timeline, I mean, it's just, it's, it's just, it's outrageous. I think everybody agrees on that, that no one is going to wait 25 years for anything and quite frankly, by the time that comes to fruition, you know, many people, including in this room, won't be here to see it. That, that's unacceptable. We're, we're not going to allow that to happen. So we've got to prioritize this. Do you believe a five-to-10-year implementation of 90B is possible?
Uh, I mean, again, it would depend on the state and, you know, how serious we are about making this, making this project happen immediately. Is it possible? Yes. I mean, we have, you know, again, with the creation of jobs alone, you know, even in the construction area, we can shore up our tracks and, and, you know, our, our infrastructure surrounding, you know, the need for high-speed rail. I think even as of last year, the Amtrak wanted to, they, they produced a new train and wanted to start implementing that train across New York State, but they couldn't do it because of the, an old track system. So again, if we can start there and start building out around, you know, around and around the actual plan and, and these particular hubs that will also. actual plan and these particular hubs that will also, you know, come as part of the entire rail system, yeah, we can do it. I mean, we're New York, we can do anything. We lead the way, right?
Yeah, thank you. That's the spirit, Mr. Alston. Thank you very much. Well, look, I think that's the target. I think we should have shovels in the ground within five years, and I think this project should be built out within the next, within this decade, within the next 10 years. That being said, you know, to have that sort of reliable service that people should be able to depend upon is also separate from high-speed rail, a separate conversation. And I'm assuming, from where you come from, from the Business Council, you believe in a larger vision, but I don't want to put words in your mouth. Tell me about your vision for high-speed rail and how that might be able to enhance the connectivity for our regions, the upstate region, the downstate region, the city of Toronto, our neighbor to the north up in Canada, out in western New York.
Right. Well, I'm from New York City, and I moved up here the end of 2021, and I'm just talking personally, right? So, I have a lot of family who, you know, when I moved up here, you know, everyone was coming, you know, to see me and, you know, hang out, but one of the things they say now is, you know, that drive is too much. You know, it's an hour just to get out of the city alone. Oh, man, I wish the trains were just a little bit faster, you know, two hours and 30 minutes, two hours and 45 minutes, constant delays, train traffic, you know, sometimes you hear things about, you know, again, infrastructure problems within the tracks. I think that with reliable service, with a effective train service, we can connect everyone, not only just connect individuals, but there's some people that will rather or consider living on the outskirts of even New York City because of, you know, high-speed rail. I would even say that it would be a boon to tourism, because this is a beautiful state. And if we had an effective way to get people there to different parts of the state quickly, I think that many people will want to come, whether it be from Buffalo or New York City, to go, you know, see a show, you know, see the museums, see the different things I didn't even, you know, know that New York State produced. We went in October, we did a manufacturing bus tour. We went across the state from downstate all the way to Buffalo, places like Mythalatum, Kodak, Cathedral Candle, you know, there were places that we went to and things that we create that I had no idea. And when we spoke to the leaders of these organizations, the main thing they talked about was, one, the workforce, and, two, again, connectivity. They can expand, they can expand their output, they could, they would, you know, be happy to get a workforce that was close by, but given sometimes the weather, as well as, you know, everyone doesn't have access to a car, these are some of the issues that they run into. So, you know, they've also, we advocate on their behalf, and they have also asked us to advocate about a number of different things, but, you know, particularly, one, the expansion of high-speed rail, but also, again, shoring up the workforce to get this thing done.
Thank you, Mr. Alston. Anything else to add?
No, but if I do, I'll definitely...
Thank you, please. Well, upon that, that concludes the State Senate 2024 Passenger Rail Hearing. I want to thank my colleague, Senator Cooney, my colleagues, Senator Lou, Senator Oberacher, for their participation, all of these extraordinary panelists that came before us. I want to recognize Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stuart-Cousins for calling this public hearing, following the release late last year of the EIS, and I appreciate all of the testimony that we had here today. So, we have work ahead of us, looking forward to that and all of the partnerships that have been created here and we've spoken about today, and some that weren't here with us today. Look forward to connecting our state further via rail and into the future high-speed rail. Thank you all.